Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mrs. Natalie. Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. I know we have a really, really large crowd outside, so if you can hear me out there, we appreciate you being here and supporting us and supporting your students. And we are going to do our best to roll through this as well as we can tonight. But we have a treat to start off the meeting, which is a performance from Santiago High School's Madrigals. And Ms. Anna Caridi Mesa will introduce them.
Okay, so tonight, we are delighted to welcome the Santiago High School Madrigals under the direction of Mrs. Rochelle Randine. The Madrigals are Santiago High School's premier vocal ensemble, recognized for their exceptional talent, artistry, and commitment to musical excellence. This evening, they will be performing a Dickens repertoire holiday preview, a collection of festive selections inspired by the timeless charm of a Christmas carol and the spirit of traditional Victorian caroling. Please join me in welcoming Mrs. Rochelle Randine and the Santiago High School Madrigals as they share a preview of their holiday season performances and bring the joy of the holidays to our boardroom tonight.
The next piece that we're going to be -- well, we have a couple of gigs, but we're going to be singing at Disneyland Candlelight on December 7th. So this next piece is going to be sung with 300 other singers on the steps of the Disneyland train station, and we are working really hard and we're super excited. So here is the piece born. Eva.
Now is born the divine Christ child. Play the music with a tuneful oboes. Now is born the divine Christ child. Let all sing and rejoice this day.
Ages long since her passed and gone, when the wise man for tall is coming. Ages long since her passed and gone, Noel, Noel, let us sing.
He was born in a stable bed.
On red straw, now he sleeps so soundly.
He was born in a stable bed.
Bow in homage to him now.
He was born in a stable bed.
On red straw, now he sleeps so soundly.
He was born in a stable bed.
Bow in homage to him now.
Now is born the divine Christ child. Play the music with a tuneful oboes. Now is born the divine Christ child. Let all sing and rejoice this day.
"Lohah Rose," this is the song that we had to audition with, and our marvelous, beautiful, handsome principal also sang it.
Ms. Randine, for our lovely online audience and our audience outside, would you be so kind as to step into the microphone at the podium so that all of the others can hear your lovely commentary?
I was sharing that our marvelous principal, Dr. Torres, precedes all of these kids in singing in Candlelight, because he sang it when you were how old? He was 18, and he sang in his choir at Candlelight, so we are excited to keep that tradition going. The next song that we'll be singing is the one that we had to audition with, and we sent that in along with our National Anthem, and we were chosen from, I don't know, a lot of schools. So it's quite a blessing. It's only November 18th, but we must wish you a Merry Christmas. So that will be our last piece for you today.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Good tidings we bring to you and your kin. Good tidings of Christmas and a Happy New Year. Good tidings we bring to you and your kin. Good tidings of Christmas and a Happy New Year. Now bring us some figgy pudding. Now bring us some figgy pudding. Now bring us some figgy pudding and bring it out here. We won't go until we get some. We won't go until we get some. We won't go until we get some. Bring it out here.
We all love figgy pudding. We all love figgy pudding. We all love figgy pudding.
So bring some out here. Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry.
Merry, merry, merry. We wish you a Merry, Merry, Merry.
We wish you a Merry Christmas. And a Happy New Year. Merry Christmas.
Thank you so much, Santiago High School Madrigals. Just a shout out to this fabulous group that they have a concert coming on December 9th at 5:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. at Santiago. So if you'd like to see more of them, if you are parents of Madrigals and you would like to leave at this point, you are welcome to do that. We understand that you're here supporting your kiddos. At this time, we will be reporting out on last month's actions. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have a few appointments that were made last month in closed session, and we always take the next board opportunity, a board meeting opportunity, to introduce them openly here in this open session. So we have beginning has already started as the interim AP at Harada. We have Carrie Joyce.
Good evening, everybody. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the board and the cabinet for the opportunity to continue serving in such a wonderful district. I grew up here, and I am just beyond happy to be able to continue. I have my family with here tonight, me tonight, my super amazing parents, my husband, one of my children, my other one is at school, and then I have just a wonderful support team with me. I have my brand new principal, Ms. Warner, who has just made my first few weeks just amazing, so welcoming, such a great transition for me. And then I have just some of the best friends you could ever ask for here to support me, and I'm just grateful to be able to continue on this journey. Thank you.
All right. And then we have, actually returning to the district in the role of dean at Auburndale, we have Erica Terapour.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the board and cabinet for bringing me back home. I'm so excited to be here. Tonight, I brought my very squirrely kids, Liam and Landon, and my husband, and I want to shout out to my family who is sick at home right now. So hi, everyone. But thank you. Say hi.
All right. And rounding out our appointments from last board meeting, we have the serving in the position of dean at El Cerrito, Jennifer Hansen.
Okay, good evening. Thank you to the board. Thank you to the cabinet for bringing me to Corona Norco. I live in this district. I am so excited to be in this district to serve the community I live in. I did bring my children with me tonight, and my husband, my mom, and of course, my new principal at El Cerrito. I am I am so excited to start. Go Redhawks.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate you being here and bringing your families to join us. Next up, we will be adopting the minutes from our last regular business meeting, which was October 7th. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Chris. Ms. Natalie, how do you vote? Awesome. Okay, let's vote. Everybody else. The less important board members than Natalie. I don't see our boards lighting up. They're not working. Okay, as a show of hands, do we vote to approve the minutes? Yes. So that's a motion by Mary, seconded by Chris. Motion carries. Next minutes are our board study session from October 21st. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
All second. Motion made by Mary, seconded by me. Natalie, you weren't here, so you don't have to vote. Board members, let's vote. Motion passes unanimous. Okay, and now on to a very exciting part of our meetings always, and that's special recognition of amazing students. So we will start off with Dr. Goines making the first round of introductions.
Thank you, Madam President. We are so proud of our visual and performing arts here in Corona Norco, and tonight, we would like to bring our coordinator of visual and performing arts up to recognize some phenomenal young students who have had some really amazing achievements, and that is Dr. Michelle Usher. We'll introduce our students. Dr. Usher.
Hello. I'm so excited. We have a lot of kiddos here today, so we'll be calling them by name in a second, but I want to tell you a little bit about their achievement. So it's my great honor to recognize and celebrate the extraordinary achievements of some of our talented students from all of our high schools, Santiago, Norco, Centennial, Corona, and Roosevelt. These students have been selected as members of the prestigious Pasadena City College Tournament of Roses Honor Band. The Tournament of Roses Honor Band is a time-honored tradition, marching in the iconic Rose Parade ever since 1930. This band is composed of outstanding musicians and performers, including select high school students who compete against hundreds of their peers from across Southern California for a coveted spot. Their selection signifies not only their exceptional music talent, but also their dedication, discipline, and passion for the performing arts. This year, we're incredibly proud to have our students represent both our schools and our district on such a prominent stage. The Rose Parade is watched by millions around the world, and these students will bring pride and inspiration to our entire community. We would also like to extend our heartfelt thanks to the band directors, coaches, and administrators at each site for your constant support of your students and programs. Our dedication plays a vital role in these achievements and continued success of our arts education program. Let's take a moment to recognize these students from Santiago, Norco, Centennial, Corona, and Roosevelt High Schools who will be marching at the Tournament of Roses Honor Band. Congratulations to each of you on this outstanding accomplishment. First up is a senior, Orpheus Chow, playing the trombone. Sorry. And maybe if we want to hold our applause until the very end, otherwise it's going to take us a long time. Another senior, Alexa Cruz, playing the horn. Sophomore Elijah De Guzman, playing the trumpet. Senior Jacob Gu, playing the trombone. Senior Jennifer Lee, playing the euphonium. Senior Zachary Lee, playing the trumpet. Junior Michael Malcone, playing the trumpet. Freshman Selvin Margono, playing the alto sax. Freshman Jamal Martin, playing the trumpet. Senior Bradford Tang, playing the euphonium. Sydney Trong, who's a freshman, playing the trumpet. Sophomore Dao Wang, playing the tuba. Senior Madeline Yem, part of the color guard. Senior Carol Zhang, playing the trombone. Senior Jace Saunders, playing the trumpet. Sophomore Selena Martin, playing the trumpet. Murdy Serenity, Jr., playing the herald trumpet. Vivian Vargas, who's a junior, playing the piccolo. Senior Michelle Miller, playing the meliphone. Senior Stephanie Pertite, part of the color guard. Junior Christopher Stocker, playing the baritone sax. And sophomore Ken from Poxestorn, sophomore, playing the sousaphone. I want to add real quick, one thing that I did not talk about is how all of these students have to travel to Pasadena every Sunday for practice until they've already started, and it'll be every Sunday until the Tournament of Roses. So, on top of Saturday and Sunday, Mom knows. But this is, this is on top of the things that they're already doing, so they still have marching band, they still have all the other things that they're doing, so let's give them a round of applause. We have some of our amazing band directors here, too, so let's get them in the picture.
Yeah, taller, taller in the back, sure. Tall, if you're tall. Oh, yeah, that works. And then, Mary. Mary, go this way. There's a gap right there. Okay, you ready? Okay, one, two, and... Oh, hold on for a second.
Let's give them a round of applause. And y'all can watch them on TV.
And now to, to really highlight the variety and the talent that just really covers all of the things in this district, we went from our, we're going from our 2026 Tournament of Roses Parade Honor Band participants now to, to girls' flag football champions. So I will pass it on over to, to Ms. Montgomery. There she is, to introduce her team.
So, so I will, I will go, I will kind of backtrack since they're coming on. This is Eleanor Roosevelt High School's principal that's going to be speaking here in a moment, and this is their girls' flag football team that are the CIF champions. Let's give them a round of applause.
You can stay right there. All right. Good evening, President Nicola, and members of the Board and our CNUSD executive cabinet. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to celebrate a truly special group of student athletes tonight. It's an honor to recognize our Division III CIF Championship Girls Flag Football. This season, and I'm going to admit, didn't begin with a winning streak. In fact, it started a little slow, but what has always defined this team isn't how they started, it's how they responded. They showed up, worked hard, and kept going. Their perseverance and dedication carried them through league play, where they finished in fourth place, and then all the way to the championship game in the Big Eight Tournament. When it came time for playoffs, everything they had invested since the summer finally came together. Their discipline, their chemistry, and their belief in one another in full display. And at the center of it was Coach Constable, whose leadership and steady guidance helped deliver the first-ever flag football championship for both CNUSD and Eleanor Roosevelt High We are so proud of these athletes and grateful for the chance to honor their historic accomplishments, and more to come, I am sure, with you tonight. Thank you for supporting our students and celebrating their milestones with us. And Coach Constable, do you want to say anything?
I just want to thank the Corona Norco Unified School District for investing in girls' flag football three years ago, being the first district in this area to see the worth and the pride that these young ladies have, the ability to take a new sport by leaps and bounds and come from one year of just learning a brand-new sport to the third year here being able to be CIF champions. It speaks volumes on this district and how much they really, truly invest in the student athletes at each individual school. To the athletes, way to go, guys. This is really a milestone moment that you guys are going to live to remember for the rest of your lives. I'm super proud of each and every one of you.
We have your certificates. We'll give that to you later.
How can we get it? Yeah, like, should we try? Yeah, I think if you move you around, you're going to be in the picture. Don't let me bump your... Okay, ready, one, two. Okay, I'm going to back up some more so we can get ready. One. All right, ready, one, two, and...
So I have to share that my daughter was on the girls' flag football team at Norco High the first year we brought it to the district, and let me just say, these girls mean business. They are fierce, and they are tough, and they really make us proud, so congratulations, Roosevelt. You ladies are amazing. And we will take a moment to let the parents who I know would love to stay here if they could, but just have other places they have to be, you know, it's just the way it works. Jamie would like to invite you to stay, but no, okay. Okay. How are, how are we doing on our friends outside, Ben? We're getting, are we getting them in? Soso? Masomenos? Okay. Okay. We are now moving on to our School Smarts Parent Academy with our fabulous superintendent, Ms. Gattamala.
Thank you. I would like to call up Ms. Amber Peland, the PTA president, to help me here in congratulating our School Smart graduates. And I'd just like to say, I got to meet our School Smart class yesterday, and I just want to say thank you for everything that you do, and got to spend some time with them. I know they dedicate a lot of time to us and to our schools, our districts, and they help all our students, so I'm really excited to be part of this honor, and I'll turn it over to you.
All right, good evening, everybody. Oh, I spy School Smart shirts. Very nice. Thank you. Thank you, Dahlia. So my name is Amber Peland. I'm the president for Corona Norco Council PTA again. Tonight, I'm here with my fellow board members to recognize a group of parents who recently completed our School Smarts Parent Engagement Academy. Now more than ever, building strong connections between parents and their children's schools is vital to student success. Developed by California State PTA in 2008, the School Smarts Parent Engagement Academy was created based on extensive research with parents and families across the state. Now in its third edition, this program continues to help parents navigate the public education system while emphasizing the importance of a full curriculum that includes the arts. This year, Corona Norco, excuse me, Corona Norco Council PTA was proud to offer the School Smarts Academy at Garretson Elementary. Participation was open to all parents and caregivers in the school district, and we were pleased to have families from Garretson Elementary, Lincoln Elementary, Prado View Elementary, Vander Mullen Elementary, El Cerrito Middle School, Centennial High School, Norco High School, and Corona High School take part. So we have all the levels there. To summarize the six-week academy and curriculum, throughout our time together, we explored the parent's role as their child's first teacher and the importance of parent involvement. We focused on preparing children for a lifetime of learning by fostering a growth mindset. We learned about the structure of California's public school system, including local funding, governance, and decision-making. We strengthened our communication skills so we can advocate effectively without becoming adversarial. That's Anna's thing. And finally, we developed action plans to help raise student achievement both at home and in our broader community. So on behalf of Corona Norco Council PTA, I want to thank the Board of Education, our district leadership, for supporting parent engagement programs like the School Smarts Academy. We would also like to thank, our facilitator this year was Anna Mesa. We would like to thank Crystal Miao for helping us with our arts part of the portion. Principal Maria Cortez and AP Heather Griffins for letting us host at Garretson. Awesome hosts. Alisa Viela for helping with our translation from our care services at Centennial. Stacy Wong is here from California State PTA. She's the board of managers. She's here as our special guest this evening. Celine Alatori, she's watching on YouTube right now, and she was our School Smarts coordinator from California State PTA. Also, I'd like to thank Dahlia for all her support, and Mary for being our school board rep's special guest, and then also Nicole, I saw Nicole out there. Nicole was our, was our teacher special guest that we had speak to the families. So I want to also extend our deepest appreciation to our parent graduates for their commitment and dedication to lifelong learning. Your participation strengthens not only your children's education journey, but also the entire school community here. So please join me now in recognizing the following School Smarts graduates. So I'm going to call them up. We have certificates for them. Where's my Suzie Smart? She's going to come help, because I'm also a graduate. I can't present it to myself, so she's going to help me. Okay. Claudia Ayala. She's our first one. Come up here, Claudia. You want to hand this to her? Thank you. Do you want to do? All right. We call her Chrissy, but it's Christina Calayo. There she is. There you go, my lady. Okay, and then we have Teresa Correll. There's Teresa. Thank you. And then we have Christina Cover. There's Christina. There she is. All right, all these moms are awesome, by the way. And Kelly Keely. Miss Kelly was outside. I hope she's here. Okay. There's Miss Kelly. Okay, we call her Miss D, but Dinushia Leywani. She's around this side. Miss D, Dr. D, she has a lot of names. Samara Merida. Okay, let's see. Crystal Miao. I like her last name. Okay, let's see. Crystal Miao. I like her last name. Then we have Sheri Monk. There's Sheri. And then Blanca. Blanca, you have a last name that I can't read. Tanako Nava. There's Blanca. We love Blanca. And then, let's see, Susie Smart. Susie. There's my EVP, Susie. Oh, and here, you can give it to me. Amber Peland, that's me. Thank you. Thank you. Let me just say, I finally got to take the class after years of being on the backside, coordinating the daycare and the hospitality and everything. I was very happy to take the class with these ladies here. So thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Oh, can we invite Maria? Do you want to skip?
All right. Okay, ready. One, two, and... Hold it, hold it, hold it. Okay, ready. One, two, and... All right, now I'll jump. Bye.
All right. Huge thanks to our Parent Academy there, which I just would be remiss if I didn't mention, like, woman power. But just saying. Moms are fierce, right? Just like those flag football players. We appreciate the time that you put into your students and into our schools, so thank you. Thank you all for being here. Give you a moment to make your way out, if that's the direction you're headed. Of course, Jamie would like for you to stay, but... It's really not even funny to her at all. She's just, it's really... Okay, so one of the last special recognitions we're going to be talking about are our employees with advanced degrees. And we're doing this in this format because we've changed up a little bit the way we honor our students throughout the district. We used to do it before these meetings. We're now changing it up a little bit, thanks to our comms team for really reimagining and revisioning that ceremony, which is really fantastic. We had our first one last month, and it was wonderful. So we're changing up the way we're doing, honoring our employees with advanced degrees. So it's, I think, amongst all the adults is a great place to do it here tonight. And so, Mr. Gonzalez, please tell us all about them.
So thank you, Madam President. You know, on top of the incredible student recognitions and our parents, we've got the trifecta, because now we have our staff. So it takes a village, they say, and I think the village is thriving. These employees we'll be recognizing tonight take time. None of this is required. They take time over and above their duties of teaching and serving our students to pour into themselves and advance their own education to even become better at what they do. So we have, twice a year, we like to bring them for recognition. We have a number that are joining us this evening. So with no further ado, I would like to introduce, the first is Mr. Doctor Matt Avalos, who earned a Doctorate of Education in Organizational Leadership at the University of Massachusetts Global on March 2, 2025. Doctor Avalos. All right, in you go. Congratulations. We also have Melissa Aviles Gomez, who was awarded a Master of Education degree in Inspired Teaching and Learning at National University in February of 2025. Congratulations. Joining them, we have Crystal Castro, who earned a Master's of Education degree in Special Education at National University on June 28, 2025. We have Jerusha Lumley, earned a Master of Science degree in Education at Cal Baptist University, August 31, 2025. Araceli Morales was awarded a Master of Science degree in Early Childhood Studies at California Baptist University on August 31, 2025. And rounding out our esteemed group here tonight, Natalie Perez, who earned a Master of Science degree in Education at California Baptist University on April 30, 2025. Congratulations to you all, and thank you for attending to your own professional development and modeling what you do with students every day. Congratulations. Yes. So we do have one other that didn't have to RSVP because she is assigned to this duty. So can we please have Dr. Veronica Rodriguez, who was awarded a Doctor of Education degree in Organizational Change in Administration?
Yeah, can we have you guys center a little bit? Yeah, perfect. All right. Okay, ready. One, two, and... Perfect. Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, so that concludes our special recognitions. And now moving on to the presentation to the board. Dr. Goines.
Thank you, Madam President. Last board meeting, we were able to present on how we were growing our learners in CNUSD. And you saw a lot of data that evening. And then there was a data point around our English language learners. And we knew that there's a much larger story to tell. We didn't have the time to tell that last meeting. And so tonight, we get to tell that larger story. And I think what you will hear, part of that larger story, is that we have many, many of our students who are doing well. We have amazing things happening at our school sites. And you're going to hear from some of those amazing educators. But as we start, I really just want to take the opportunity to thank our teachers, our counselors, our par educators, our administrators, all of our support staffs that help support our English language learners. And a lot of that work is led by our phenomenal English language learner team. And that was led by Mr. Carlos Flores. So I would like to bring him up with his team to discuss more with you tonight about how we're supporting our emerging multilingual students.
Afternoon, board members. I apologize ahead of time. I'm a little under the weather, so I will do my very best to articulate. And if I can't, if you can't hear me, just feel free to let me know. I am joined by my team. We'll do introductions in just a minute. Perfect. Okay. So just an overview of tonight's presentation. It is a lot of information, and so we did our very best to chunk it into three parts. The first part is who are our English learners? Second part is how are they doing? We know the board has some specific questions around how they're doing. And then the third part, and why my team is here tonight, is to really highlight what are we doing to improve English learner achievement? So thank you, Dr. Goines, for your introduction. So we have a group of teachers on special assignment. They'll be up here later, so we'll skip their introductions. I do want to highlight our secretary, Jennifer Ward, who's the hub of our team, as well as Nancy and Hannah, who are our district translators and who are doing just amazing job. They're not here tonight, but shout out to all three of them. So who are our English learners? You'll notice that we have 6,194. For many of you, you know that that number is low compared to other years. We used to be around 7,500. And part of that is because we've reclassified students. That's a good thing. Over 41 languages are spoken in our district. The top languages are Spanish, Mandarin, Arabic, and Vietnamese. Over 80% of our English learners are born in the U.S., and that is a surprising fact for a lot of people. And within our English learner group are students on an IEP. And so these are kids that are what we call duly identified. They're both English learners and may have some specific learning needs. And so that's part of the group that we consider, you know, slightly, you know. So our next, kind of continuing with this metaphor of the garden, we think of our English learners as having different needs, right? Every student has unique strengths. And then within that group of English learner, that label that we use, we find a lot of diversity. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. So the first group, and one that's on our conscience, for lack of a better word, are long-term English learners. So the new definition for dashboard accountability purposes is these are kids who have been here seven or more years and are still considered English learners. That's an important metric for us, and you'll see in a minute why. The other group, and a group that's growing for us, are our newcomer English learners. So our newcomers are students who are born outside the U.S. and have been in U.S. schools less than three years. That's the fastest-growing group of English learners we have. And the last group is a group that we often refer to as English learners. We now use this term emergent bilinguals because it speaks to the idea that they know another language. It's more assets-oriented, right? We're looking at kids who are on their way to be bilingual. They may speak Spanish. They may speak Mandarin at home. They come to our school, so we refer them as emergent bilingual students. And our last group on this slide is, we don't consider them English learners for accountability purposes, but they were English learners as soon as last year or a couple months. They've met all of the criteria. They're no longer English learners. They're an important part of this discussion because they're kids who are being successful. And so we want to kind of highlight their work. Now we're moving on to just a little bit more information on each group we talked about. So long-term, as you know, are seven or more years. If you look carefully at that bottom slide, why is seven years such a critical time point? Is because the research shows us that language acquisition for English takes between five and seven years. So if they're not getting to that English language proficient by seven years, the state, we, as well, are worried about them because they may run out of time, right? That's what the research shows, to really close those gaps. The next group are newcomer students. We have over 1,500 newcomer students. One thing that we're shifting in our approach, and you'll hear a little bit around that, is these students, we see them as seeds or seedlings, right? They need a lot of care. Oftentimes, they need intensive language, right? But they also equally need social, emotional support. Oftentimes, they're relocating. That can be a traumatic experience. Resettling, right? Sometimes they have a stigma, perhaps, of feeling like an outsider. Sometimes they lack access to healthcare and services. So this is a group that we in Corona Norco are really trying to fine-tune our approach so they get both language and social, emotional support. And our last group here, and I know this was, I think Ms. Merchant had a very specific question related to this group, is what are we doing specifically to support their designated ELD? So these are kids that enter into our elementary schools and speak another language at home, and they're really learning English formally in the school setting. So this year, with our benchmark update, we have a very specific kit that's called the Xpress. That's where kids learn how English works. They learn very specific language pieces. And in a minute, you'll hear a little bit around how we support our teachers in that specific piece. Last but not least, reclassified English fluent proficient students. They met all the criteria for reclassification. They got a four on the state assessment. They have satisfactory grades. They're meeting their assessment goals. And I know that this board has long been engaged in conversations around assessment, things like M-Class and FastBridge. Our English learners benefit tremendously from that because it gives them an opportunity to reclassify multiple times of the year. So that's how that connects with us. One thing to note before we move on is, on our data, in CNUSD data, kids that reclassified do better on S-Back Math and Language Arts as a whole compared to English-only students. So we know if we can reclassify them, they do really well in meeting those statewide expectations. So the next part of our presentation is how are our English learners doing? So some of our students within that group are doing well. They're actually thriving. Some need additional support, and that's evident in the dashboard. We'll talk a little bit more about that. But we really are at a point now in our district where they're doing well, but if we want them to do better, we really got to change our approach for each of these groups that I mentioned, whether they're newcomers or outcasts. They need slightly different things, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So one of the measures is our ALPE. At our last board presentation, Kim walked us through it. It's this idea that every year, they're advancing on this test. They take this test one time a year, and the ALPE compares this year's test to last year's test. So it's a really good measure of how kids are doing over time. So let's say, for example, I took this test in February. It would compare that result to the year before. And if I went up, I would be considered making progress. If I didn't, I would be not making progress, and you'll see why that's important in a minute. So our comparison year over year is, last year, about half of our students who took ALPAC, about half of those students made progress. The state considers that maintained, 50.1. This last year, we dipped. So it's still considered maintained because the change is small. Mr. Rahag, I know you asked, how many kids are we talking about? When we talk about percentages, that's 200 less kids. So of the 5,000 kids that took ALPAC, we're talking about 200 less kids this year that made progress versus the year before. When that's represented, it is a percentage, it's the minus 1.7%. Statewide, for this year, for 2025, about 46.4% made progress. So we're slightly above the statewide average for ALPE, but there's more work to do. We certainly know we want to do better than 48.4%. So this graph is the same, kind of broken down by areas. What I'll draw the board's attention to on this one is that top purple color. Those are kids that made progress. So in 2019, about 42% made progress. Last year, 2025, about 47.3% made progress. So that's growth compared to 2019. It's slightly down from last year. If you look at the 2024, you'll see it was 47.8. So that's part of the ALPE, that minus .5. The other part I'll draw the board's attention to is that blue band. It used to be 7.3, and now it's 1.5. These are kids that took the exam over two years and scored a four both times. So you'll wonder why we would celebrate that decrease. We celebrate it because it means that they reclassified. So they weren't in that dataset the second year. We actually want that to be zero because the sooner we reclassify kids, the better. So that's a positive trend. The downside is that it hurts our ALPE because ALPE is that calculation of that purple band and that blue band. So it's part of our ALPE decrease is related to that. Another point I'll draw the board's attention to is that last band at the bottom that's pink. These are kids that regressed a level. It's concerning to us. We kind of held at 17.5. Certainly more work to do there. But I do want to reassure the board that that is on our mind, and we have some efforts specific to that. So this next slide is a comparison of Corona Norco to the state. Just for, to be a little bit more succinct, I'll draw the board's attention to Level 4, which is the number of kids that scored the highest on ALPAC. That's important for us because those are the kids that are eligible for reclassification. And so that's 19% compared to the state of California. And so that's 19% compared to the state of California, which is about 15%. So that's positive. Next slide. How does that compare to last year? So last year, about 18% of our English learners scored a four. And this year, 19.37%. So that's an increase in the number of kids that scored proficient. So this is where the data gets a little bit more complex. When we look at LP and we see a decrease, but yet we know that more kids are scoring a four. There's some reasons behind that, but it is part of that picture that we ask ourselves, how are our kids doing? So we celebrate that. We think that's good progress for our kids. More work to do there as well. Two more slides on how our kids are doing. This slide compares in Grades 3 through 8 plus 11th. All of our students take the S-Back Assessment. And so we have data for how our English learners do on that specific slide. And so you'll see current English learners are about 104 points below the standard. That is concerning, but I'll tell you in context, it's not as concerning because if they were proficient on S-Back, they wouldn't be English learners anymore. We would reclassify them. The state average is about 109 points below the standard. So on that specific metric, we outperformed the state as well. Super important for me is the recently reclassified English learners. When we reclassify our students, they actually do better on S-Back. And you can see that in this summary, is that they're 27.4 points above the standard, comparing that to our English-only students, who are about 22 points. And so both of those saw increases this year. And so that's why it's important for us, when we look at English learners, that we reconsider how our kids are doing once they reclassify. So that's optimistic, and that's a trend CNUSD has had for multiple years. And then we look at that again, that same comparison in math. 118 points below the standard. The state average is about 121 points below. Recently reclassified students are a little bit closer because they're at 15 points below the standard compared to our English-only students, who are 19 points. So it is a true statement to say that they outperform our English-only students once they reclassify. So we kind of draw your attention to this metaphor of this plant again. And so our FIP students are blooming independently. They don't need a lot of support. They're doing pretty well. They've met all their criteria, and they have satisfactory grades. This is not surprising when you think about it, though. These are the highest achieving of your English learners, right? So it's just an important caveat. They're a small percentage of our English learners, but they do well once they reclassify. And last year, we reclassified 1,276 students. And so that's, hard work really is a testament certainly to the team. But if you walk most of our school campuses, we have really built a system that our counselors, our teachers, our APs are really wanting to reclassify our students. They're on them. They're following up. They're providing support and interventions. So that's about almost 18% of our English learners. So if you remember, we're like at 19%, 18%. That means that once they hit the four, sites, teams, teachers are helping them meet those other criterion, like grades, like assessment. And so the shift to assessment that we've done helps our English learners because they have multiple times a year to assess, to meet that criterion. And last but not least, if we continue the metaphor of the tree, is why reclassification is so important, especially at the middle and high school, is that they have greater access to A-through-G classes. They have greater access to electives, to CTE pathway completion, to advanced courses. This is not to say that English learners don't, but there is a challenge when they have some scheduling restraints. So really reclassifying them before secondary helps us, helps them have, you know, broader access to these courses. Now I'm going to kind of walk us through, Ms. Merchant, I know you had some questions specifically about what are we doing? So I'll make it brief, but Norma Martinez, our teacher on special assignment, is going to walk us through some of the things we've done. And so for the boards and for our audience, we themed these action steps around four themes: the learning, the data, professional learning, and student engagement. So each of my TSAs will come up and speak to one of those specific points.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Good evening, Ford. Good evening, everyone. So our efforts in supporting our emerging bilinguals in their growth and transformation is to really facilitate our professional development for our teachers. And so our professional development really is, you know, attending school sites and, excuse me, please forgive me, attending school sites. And to provide those, to provide, I'm so sorry. I apologize. I'm really nervous. So, let's start over. So our team really facilitates teachers' learning through professional development and designated English language development, or ELD in short. And so what ELD is, is a specific time during the day where students are learning English and how English works. So in our district this year, what we have done is we have supported in teachers' learning the new material, which is Express. So our role as teachers on special assignment is to to work with teachers and support them with learning and navigating the new Express materials. So here, at the top of the picture, on the top right-hand side, you see an example of myself at Garrettson, providing that support for teachers. And so what we do is really go through each component of Express. And so what's really exciting this year is that we have new components such as student consumables. We have student vocabulary cards. We have a lot of new stuff that the teachers are excited about. And so what we do is we just ensure that they know each component, and then we're there to support them for whatever they need. In addition, we, here at the lower picture, I'm sorry, if you go back, in the lower picture, we have our team. It's at Jefferson Elementary School, which is also going through those components. And in addition, we are there to model lessons and to co-plan with teachers and to really help them navigate, again, the system, navigate Express. And so in the next picture, the work, in the next slide, the work continues in our secondary level and how we're supporting long-term English learners through ELD. And our ELD curriculum is the I-LIT, okay? And so what we do is we bring our teachers together. We have collaborative planning days where teachers come in. They talk about their students who are struggling. So at this point, we know that our long-term English learners have been struggling, and we know that they should be English proficient at this time. So what we do is we bring in teachers, and then they discuss how they can help our English learners. So here, we bring a team of teachers together. We go over strategies. They learn from one another. They talk about first best practices. And so it really is a great time for teachers to come together several times during the year to discuss that. And so by providing these supports, we really do help our long-term English learners with the supports that they need. And with that, I am going to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Tega.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you so much. We're going to continue with the next theme of data. And we are very much aware that our English learner progress indicator is showing that our long-term English learners are struggling a bit. With that being said, we want to do better. We want to make sure that we're supporting our students with that. And with that said, we know that the data points for LPAC is once a year. So we have to ask ourselves, how can we pinpoint the supports that we need for our students? In order to do that, we need to gather data. And one of the instruments that we have is our interim LPAC assessments. The interim LPAC assessments can provide data points for our teachers multiple times a year. So as a department, we have been elevating these efforts through our 7th through 12th grade sites to use the interim assessments to support with gathering the data they need to support around listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And with that data, our teachers are able to adjust their instruction and support our students. And in turn, our students also feel more confident when it comes down to taking the Summit of LPAC because they've seen the task types, and they're able to feel confident in taking that test. All right. Continuing the conversation around data, we are also very much aware that in many cases, our students may not be aware that their English learners, in some cases, even at the high school, they won't find out until they step into an ELD class. And so as a department, we've made huge efforts to start these conversations as early as first grade to create awareness around identification of English learner, understanding what that means, and most importantly, meeting the needs around reclassification. And with that being said, we have been able to have great conversations, sparking conversations with teachers, with parents, and with students around goal-setting and understanding that. Because what happens is, by providing as a department that support system, we've created data points around reclassification. The EL goal sheets create data points around what reclassification data they need, around their LPAC score, whether it's the comparison of basic skills, and so forth. With that being said, our teachers have also embraced this process through parent-teacher conferences, allowing them to have these conversations as well, or at the secondary level with their secondary ELD classes. And in turn, we've also taken this to our D-LAC board, having conversations on what questions should we ask at parent-teacher conferences? What is reclassification and understanding their data? And we've had multiple activities that sparked great conversation, but most importantly, provided them the tools they need to be successful. Our next theme is around professional learning. And with professional learning, it's very exciting to be provided the opportunity to have professional development for our assistant principals. And we've been allotted some time to really provide the bite-sized PD. This year, we started with asking them, how can we support you in supporting your language learners? And so we went in and surveyed and really listened. And what administrators really want is to support their teachers directly into the classroom. And with that feedback, we have been able to provide quality, I'm sorry, we've been able to provide them with intentional targeted look-for's, on what to look for in ELD. And that came straight from feedback from our administrators. This work is just beginning, but it's very exciting work. And with continuation at the heart of our schools is our bilingual paraprofessionals. They are the first person of contact in many cases for our newcomer and emergent bilinguals. And we know that this work is so important. And so our department has provided them with the professional tools they need so that our students can take risks in the classroom and feel comfortable. So our professional development includes anywhere from social, emotional strategies to tools to build language in the classroom. And so we provide this professional development multiple times a year for our students. And some of the feedback, we also ask them for feedback. And some of the feedback we received this year is really focusing on a secondary PD. So we're working on trying to get that in the books as well. All right. And with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Veronica Perez.
Thank you. Good evening. So moving on to the next theme, which is student engagement. We know that when students are engaged, they improve on their academic achievement. They feel a sense of belonging. It boosts their motivation. So what are we doing here in Corona Norco to improve student engagement? We have heard that our newcomer group is our growing population, and they have different needs. They are very unique. We know that they're very diverse. A lot of our newcomers speak different languages other than Spanish, Mandarin, Pashto, Turkish, Cantonese. So this summer, we piloted, it was an honor to be part of it. We piloted a program called Summer Language Academy in collaboration with Cal State Fullerton. So this program, the curriculum used, was all geared for our newcomer students. So if you look here at our picture, we have some newcomer students that were not only learning, they were collaborating, but they were also reading a novel. They got to read a novel called Invisible, and they really connected with the novel because they saw themselves in this novel because the novel was about transitioning to schools here in America. So during this program, we also had our ELD teachers teach the class. So then that way, they could get a sense of what is it that our students need who are newcomers. Like I said, they're very diverse. So the goals of the program was to build their confianza, confidence, and to build the sense of comunidad, community. And we really, we really did a great job. I'm going to give myself a pat on the back. Because this program, really, we saw the student voice in this program. And so we did see that we need, we got to see the needs of these students. Okay, if you go to the next slide. So then, knowing that our newcomers, and continuing with student engagement, and knowing that we need to hear their voice, we need to listen to it. This has created a sense of bringing to the table collaboration, not just in conversations, not just between the teachers, but also bringing other people into the conversations. So we have started to use student voice. And in a minute, you will hear by my fabulous colleague, Karitina Gonzalez, which is going to talk to you a little bit about student voice.
Good evening. So as we brought our students together, specifically our newcomers, we learned that the counselors play a very important part in their success. Sometimes, most often, the counselors are the first adult interaction that our newcomers have as, when they come to our school site, our newcomers. They meet with their counselor to get their school schedules. So knowing this, and knowing that our counselors do a lot of the systems work, we engage our counselors in listening sessions. So you can see from the second image that we aligned the Street Data work that we're doing to the standards of practice that our counselors are already doing. And the Street Data comes from our partnership with Shane Sophia that we're doing this year. She's one of the co-authors of the book, Street Data. And that, and so she's, her and her work is what's guiding our approach in the Street Data work that we're doing. And so not only did we meet with counselors at the secondary level at high school, but we also met with counselors at the middle school and elementary levels as well. And what we came to find out is that counselors at all levels are doing the hard work. I have to make the heart shape. And they're creating belonging. They're advocating for their kids. But we also found out that there's work that we have to do in the system. We have to do a better job of communicating and supporting all of our staff on how to better support our newcomers. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Flores.
I know it's a lot of information all at once, but we wanted the board to hear directly from our students. So I'm going to bring up Ms. Fernanda Silva, who's one of our students who participated in our Summer Language Academy. She's here. She's prepared a few words.
Hello, my name is Fernanda Silva, and I'm here today to share my experience at the SLA Summer Language Academy. This program helped me a lot, both in my studies and in my personal life. During the time at SLA, I learned how to stay alone with other people, even though we are different race and cultures. I also learned how to prepare for a new stage in my life, which is high school, even though if I don't know the language very well. It taught me how to have confidence in myself and use my voice to be able to succeed. The projects we did in school have, and the projects we did during SLA had a wonderful purpose to have fun and to express ourselves as we are. We are all part of the community. Thanks to SLA, I found my voice to have been using it to help me, for me and for others. I really hope SLA have this, have it this and every single year in summer. Thank you.
Our next student is Mayrin Alejandra Gonzalez Castellanos, who was participating in one of our listening sessions with students. So she was a student that started at Norco and is continuing at Orange Grove. So we're going to invite her up. So she's going to do hers in Spanish, and then we'll do the translation as well.
Hi. Hola, mi nombre es Mayrin Alejandra Gonzalez y soy estudiante de Orange Grove High School. Hoy tengo el honor de Hoy tengo el honor de representar la voz de los estudiantes de Orange Grove, del distrito, y de todos los estudiantes que pueden sentirse identificados con mi historia.
Hello, my name is Mayrin Gonzalez and I am a student at Orange Grove High School. Today, I am honored to represent the voice of Orange Grove, the district, and every student who may see a part of themselves in my story.
Estoy aquí como prueba de que las oportunidades son reales y accesibles para todos los estudiantes en el distrito cuando recibimos el apoyo adecuado.
I stand here as living proof that opportunities are real and accessible for all students in the district when we receive the right support.
Llegué a los Estados Unidos desde México hace solo dos años y vine sin saber inglés, pero con el corazón lleno de esperanza, la esperanza de aprender el idioma, graduarme y construir un futuro mejor.
I came to the United States from Mexico just two years ago. I arrived with no English, but with a heart full of hope. Hope that I could learn the language, graduate, and build a better future.
Comencé mi camino en Norco High School en mi segundo año, con muchas ganas de salir adelante, pero rápidamente me di cuenta de la realidad. No entendía el idioma y me costaba encontrar apoyo del personal que comprendiera mis desafíos. Me sentía perdida en una escuela que era demasiado grande para mis sueños.
I began my journey at Norco High School as a sophomore. Determined to work hard, but reality hit me quickly. I didn't understand the language and I struggled to find support from staff who understood, who did not understand my challenges. I felt lost in a school that felt too big for my dreams.
Me sentía invisible, como si no perteneciera a ningún lugar. Y por un momento pensé que tal vez nunca lograría mi meta.
I felt invisible, like I didn't belong anywhere. And for a moment, I believed I might have never reached my goal.
Pero todo cambió cuando mi consejera me habló de la oportunidad de transferirme a Orange Grove High School. Sentí miedo. Era como empezar de nuevo, igual que cuando llegué por primera vez a este país. Pero en el fondo sabía que necesitaba un lugar donde realmente pudiera crecer.
But everything changed when my counselor told me about the opportunity to transfer to Orange Grove High School. I was scared. It felt like starting over again, just like when I first arrived in the United States. But I also knew I needed a place where I could truly grow.
Cuando llegué a Orange Grove, mi miedo era real. No conocía a nadie y no sabía qué esperar. Pero rápidamente ocurrió algo diferente. El personal me vio, me incluyó, me sentí valorada. Y gracias a ello tengo la oportunidad de participar en eventos importantes y divertidos como el que estoy hoy en día.
When I walked into Orange Grove, my fear was real. I didn't know anyone and I didn't know what to expect. But quickly, something different happened. The staff saw me, they included me, they made me feel valued. And thanks to that, I now have the opportunity to participate in fun and important events like this one.
Por primera vez, siento que pertenezco a una escuela. Mis maestros, consejeros y administradores se preocupan por mi bienestar, mi aprendizaje y mi éxito. Y gracias a eso empecé a cambiar. Me volví más segura, orgullosa y verdaderamente feliz.
For the first time, I feel like I belong in school. My teachers, counselors, and administrators care about my well-being, my learning, and my success. And because of that, I began to change. I became more confident, proud, and genuinely happy.
Orange Grove no solo me ayudó académicamente, se convirtió en una familia, un segundo hogar, y un lugar donde descubrí quién soy y quién puedo llegar a ser.
Orange Grove didn't just help me academically. It became a family, a second home, and a place where I discovered who I am and who I can become.
Estoy agradecida con el personal que creyó en mí, me apoyó y me mostró que estudiantes como yo sí importamos. Y hoy quiero que todos los estudiantes sepan, si yo pude lograrlo, ustedes también pueden. Hay un lugar para ustedes y hay personas en este distrito que los ayudarán a alcanzar sus sueños y metas. Por su atención, gracias.
I am grateful to the staff who believed in me, supported me, and showed me that students like me matter. And today, I want every student to know, if I can do it, you can too. There is a place for you. And there are people in this district who will help you reach your goals and dreams. Thank you for your attention.
I appreciate the board's time. I know it's a packed agenda today and I know the presentation was long. So I appreciate your, your attention. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Carlos. Thank you too and your team. It's a lot of data and I appreciate it. I think you do a good job of getting through it, although I do have questions. I actually just have one that I'm, and I think the reason I have this question is because I happen to be visiting Eleanor Roosevelt High School when there was two newcomers that came just that week. And the teacher that was in there was sharing with me the challenge being a Gen Ed teacher and having students that spoke no English. One was Russian and another one, I think, was Mandarin. I'm just wondering, you know, at the secondary level, what the process is when we have newcomers come in that don't speak English, you know, sounds like little to, you know, to not at all. How do they get through the day in terms of transitioning from classes and how do we support them?
So it depends a little bit school to school. At the secondary level, this is a challenge, especially when you look at language diversity. They don't always have the staffing that is, that speaks that language. Roosevelt in particular started a BEST program a couple of years ago where they're pairing newcomer students with students who are, who have been there a couple of years, who can relate to that. And that program has expanded to some of the other high schools as well. We have also worked with, because it's a little bit of both. So part of it is, is building their English, like what we call survival English. And so they'll get oftentimes either a newcomer kit or within their schedule, they'll have a very specific class. We call English One, that is really like survival English and those pieces. I think what you saw today is that we're layering things like the Summer Language Academy, building the capacity of our counselors, because they're also asking like, what do we do in these situations? So I think the answer is there's more, more work to be done there. You saw some of the efforts a little bit today that we spoke about.
I think that just that in and of itself alone can be one of the many things that contribute to some of the scores maybe not being where we would like them to be. Because I can just only imagine the struggle for those students trying to learn everything from science and math and, you know, to not in their, their home language. So I'm sure that's got to be really difficult. So thank you for all the work that you and your team does. I know it's a, it's a tough one. So thank you.
Absolutely. The only thing I would add a little bit is part of it is a collaboration with our instructional support services around when you hear words like MTSS and PBIS. That, that is part of the work that really benefits newcomer students as well. So more of that to come.
Awesome. And I'll open it up to the board for any comments or questions.
I'd like to thank the district for the summer program that we had. I, along with some of our cabinet, was able to attend the summer program. And I did not realize how many languages, I mean, you hear it over and over, but to see these students, I mean, you have Russian, you have Mandarin, students from, that just got here from Japan, China, Vietnam. I mean, some people say, English learners, oh, it's all the Hispanic kids. It's not. And to see these kids getting along with each other, they would put them at tables where you can't sit next to your friend or anybody that speaks your language. And they were trying to make conversations with each other. We were in awe because the book that they were reading, Invisible Me, it was, it was an amazing book where these kids would tell us. We, Dr. Goins and I went up to a young man and said, why did you feel invisible? He goes, just a simple thing of walking in the library and standing there and everybody's staring at you. And nobody can speak to you or ask you, how can I help you? So this program, along with Cal State Fullerton, is a great program. I hope we can get it again this next year, even though it's a very small class. But I felt it really helped these students. And two of them are the girls that were here today. It, it was great to hear them and to hear different things that they talked about from their culture that was, blew us away. You know, I mean, for a kid to say, what, you know, when you ask him, what is your favorite food? And they're going hamburger. And we're like, really? That's your favorite food? They had never eaten that before, where they came from. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that we, we think, you know, it's nothing. But these kids were, were just in awe, and pizza, of course. So thank you for what you do.
Appreciate, we appreciate the board's support.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the information. I just, as we were going through this, what I found interesting was when you were talking about how the recent, the recently reclassified English learners, how they, they do better in the Sback scores. And I'm just wondering, can you attribute that to anything?
So it's a statewide phenomenon, generally speaking. At the state level, the average is they do about the same as English only. And seeing USD, they outperform. That's been pretty consistent. One thing to know is that when you look at that data, it's your highest performing of the kids. Because they've already met ALPAC four, they're English proficient. They already have good grades. They can read at grade level. So there's part of the data that you're filtering out, your highest performing English learners. But for us, that's super important because we know if we can reclassify kids, if we can get them English proficient, they do well academically, right? They, they, they do. So that, that's why we look at that, that piece.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much and to your entire team for being here and putting such a detailed presentation together. I do have a few questions. It sounded like Express is a newer curriculum? How long have we been using that?
So this, this year's the first year that we've been implementing it. It's been an update. We've always had curriculum for designated ELD as part of Benchmark. And so Benchmark is the language arts curriculum. So we've always had it. The Express part is just better. It's, it builds and relates to the content standards better. But that practice has always been in play for years, but this curriculum is better. At least the feedback we're getting from teachers is, it was, it was due for an update. So they're happy that we have an update.
And we're going to stick with it for a while, right? To make sure that it actually works. We're not going to go change it next year because somebody's going to go to a seminar and buy this best new one.
No, no.
Express Point Two.
So it is a legal requirement that English learners get that ELD. So they'll continue and our teachers like it. And so it's just about supporting our teachers in that delivery.
And is that the same with ILET?
So ILET has been around now seven years. We get, like any school program, teachers who really, really like it and teachers who are looking to supplement it. So we've been supporting some of that work. So this last year, year and a half, we brought in some books that are appropriate for reading. Teachers have liked that. For newcomers, because ILET was maybe too hard in terms of language, we brought in a new program called Nat Geo specifically for newcomers, like Ms. Nicola's question. And that has been well received as well by the teachers that teach those newcomers. It integrates technology and it helps with some of the assessment pieces.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we're not constantly switching, that we're letting things play its course and actually seeing if that they're effective or not. For our students with disabilities on IEPs that are also not reclassified yet, at their IEP meetings, are the teams going over like their ALPAC scores and incorporating those into goals for them on their IEPs?
Absolutely. So that's, that's the ideal. We've been working on supporting our teachers and working along with our special education staff. An ALPAC is part of the assessments that they review, so that's pretty standard. Where we have some work to do is really refining the language goals. And so our, our teachers are, are doing that consistently. And we're working to support them a little around, because the challenge is writing goals that are appropriate to that individual student. And so we've done some professional development along with our special education staff. That will continue. That work never really ends because we want to make sure the goals are appropriate for our students on the IP.
Yeah, I just think that that's a really important component that for our students that are on IEPs, that they have really consistent, concise, specific goals to help them be able to reclassify is really important.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We share that.
The next question is, I've received some feedback from some of our adult transition students that have never reclassified but are continuously having to take the test and are not able to opt out or not take the test. Is, is, it's, and it's creating, for some of our students, a lot of unnecessary stress and pressure on these students and anxiety. Is there anything that we're able to do about that?
So I appreciate that because we have heard that as well, not only from students, but administrators or teachers. The challenge for us is that, excuse me, the requirements for testing are federal requirements. And then they become state requirements. So right now, there isn't an opt-out for those students. I know it's frustrating. We, I just was working with the county office around some clarification around that specific ed code requirement. It doesn't look like there's, there's an option to opt out right now. I can tell you, because I've also been to Victor Bowers as well, and we have some students there that we don't know that the ALPAC is appropriate for them. And we're kind of running into some legal dilemmas, if you will. But I will tell you that it's something we're collaborating with not only the county office, but statewide around what do we do for these specific students? Because not only will their parents tell you, the staff, the administrators, that it is frustrating. And the, the test exam itself is very stressful for our students. So more, more to come on that. Right now, preliminary, I don't have a way to opt out of that.
So parents legally cannot opt their students out of taking this test? If they, they, they can't use the opt-out form for religious exemption or anything like that?
I think more to come on that, to be honest with you. I can tell you that the preliminary review of the ed code is that no. Some initial questions to RCOE have told us the same thing. But that's something we can update the board and, and a board update, when we get a little bit more opinion on that for you.
Okay. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
For your presentation. Was it, so was it ed code? Speaking on Jamie's point, is it ed code or is it the fed, federal?
It's a little bit of both. So what happens is when kids are considered an English learner, under federal civil rights legislation, they're considered a protected class. And every single state across all 50 states has to annually assess them on their English progress. If we remember back during the pandemic, it's, we, we had the suspension with Sback, but now with ALPAC, and it has to do with that. We do have kids in our system where we, all of us, believe that they would be better suited not taking that. We just don't have a mechanism under current law to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate you adding some of the student numbers, because I always appreciate seeing that. We did have a decline from last year total, correct?
So we did. So the specific pieces where we had about 2,430 students this year that met, met progress. Last year was 2,632, so about 204 students. But a couple of things happened is that less kids were eligible for LP because we took 1,200 kids away because they reclassified. And that's not a bad thing. So the, the percentages are off a little bit because it's a slightly different subset. Where we saw some growth is the number of kids that scored a four. That was up 1%.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Because I was a little concerned at, at our percentages going down slightly in terms of reclassifying or, or who have progressed. But when, once you explain it, that it's actually 1,200 students who were reclassified and completely taken out.
So that's, that's, that's a good measure. It is, we do have the third highest LP of the 23 districts. The other two districts saw bigger declines in LP. But either way, for us, anytime we, we go down a little bit, it's not the direction we want to go. We really want to get to 55 because that would put us in the high category. So it's, that's something that we're, we're thinking about as well.
And what's our biggest challenge at getting there, would you say?
I think it's those two groups, the ALTOS, finding a way, and it really is reading and writing for them that holds them back on their assessments. Sometimes at the secondary level, you get some apathy where kids are like, why am I taking this test? Right? And that's real. And so that's why we do the student conferences and the goal setting. Newcomers, the needs, as you kind of heard from school sites, is, it's a lot for kids to transition to a new country and go through that. And so they need SEL so much. And so they need SEL so much as well. And so I think those are the two barriers or opportunities for us.
So if we could possibly assist in, 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 you know, removing some of those barriers, it could increase our, our numbers?
Yeah, and I think the work you saw today about talking to paras, professionals and counselors, they have so much insight into what those kids need. That will help us. So that work is starting.
Oh yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last question. I just looked up, ed code 60615 says that parents are able to opt their students out of ALPAC. So is that not, are we not able to, or, so can you look into that?
Yeah, we can look into that. Yep. I think that's the next steps is, you know, get a team behind it and get some clarification on that.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Flores, and your entire team for supporting our English learners and supporting the sites and our students. I have to say, I really like the student engagement piece that you mentioned. And it's, it kind of hits home for me because I grew up as an English learner myself. And I think the work that the district is doing to identify the needs of the students is really important because we are all very unique. And, you know, really connecting with the schools and learning about the culture. Because the language is not just what you learn from the, you know, curriculum or from the textbook. Really understanding your surroundings and feeling that you belong. So I really appreciate the work that you're doing with that, and I think it will go a really long way. And the data, just how close you guys are monitoring the data and looking at that regularly. Because like you said, this test is once a year. But it's really important for us to continue reviewing that throughout the year. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we are moving on to public comment. I typically read through this fairly quick, but I'm going to read through it intentionally tonight because we do have a lot of speakers here to share. At this point in our agenda, we invite the public to address the board. Please limit remarks to three minutes or less. Comments will be timed. I remind the audience that this is a public session of the board and not a meeting of the public. Although the board will not respond to speakers directly, either during public comment or after the meeting, staff members may contact speakers or follow up with written communication. If multiple speakers address the same subject, I may request that subsequent speakers only add new information. The time limit for a given topic is 20 minutes regardless of the number of speakers. If a speaker wishes to be heard on more than three topics, the speaker will be allowed up to a total of 10 minutes to address all desired items. Persons who have complaints against employees of the district are encouraged to seek resolution of those complaints by utilizing the district's written complaint procedures rather than orally addressing them at a meeting. Please refrain from applauding after each speaker. Public comment is now open. And first, I will invite Melinda Venegas to the podium.
Good evening, Madam President and Vice President and members of the board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My comment is about the urgent need for additional teacher aides in Crony Unified School District within the general education classrooms. As you know, many students with behavioral support needs are placed in regular classrooms rather than specialized settings. Inclusion is important and it reflects our district's values, but inclusion also requires adequate support. Right now, many classrooms simply do not have staffing to meet those needs. Teachers are doing everything they can. But when one student requires one-on-one attention due to academic delays, emotional regulation needs or disruptive behaviors, the entire class is impacted. Students who are trying to learn lose focus. Teachers cannot provide individualized instruction. And for the students who do need help, end up feeling frustrated or left out. Well-trained teacher aides change all of that. For example, I'm nationally registered licensed vocational nurse pursuing my RN. I volunteer time to time at an elementary school. And because of my healthcare background, I know the baselines for these children. And I understand the safety and effective supports, to support the students in behavioral needs. However, parents who volunteer do not have this training. When parents are without behavioral or safety training, walk into a classroom, they are essentially walking in blind. From a professional standpoint, this can be created a safety risk, both for the students and the volunteers. If a child becomes physically aggressive or requires specific interventions, only a trained professional is equipped to respond appropriately. We need teacher aides in our classroom with background in behavioral health training. Teacher aides allow for one-on-one support, a safer, more structured classroom environment, earlier interventions, more equitable learning. So every child, whether advanced on a level or needing support, can receive attention. This is not just about behavior, it's about maintaining safety. And importantly, the integrity of instruction for all students. Many parents and educators across the unified, the school district are seeing the same pattern. Classrooms are becoming increasingly overwhelmed, teachers exhausted, teachers are losing instructional time. And children who need extra help are not getting the consistency simply because one teacher cannot do the job of more. Adding more teachers, aides is not a luxury, but it's a necessity. Investment in safety, learning and classroom stability. Tonight, I am respectfully asking the board to consider increasingly paraprofessional staffing ratios in general education classrooms, allocating funding for ongoing training, reviewing class sizes. When we support our teachers and the staffing they need, we support every student in the room. We protect the classroom's learning. We strengthen inclusion and honor the district's mission to provide high-quality education for all. We, I have with me a proposal that can shape the district as a whole and not leave one student behind because they all matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next is Annette Hegner.
Hello, members of the board. Thank you for having me. My name is Annette Hegner, and I am here representing Concerned Women for America, the nation's largest public policy women's organization. For more than 45 years, we've stood for the sanctity of human life, family values, parental rights, and the protection of children in education. We believe every child deserves dignity, opportunity, and the support necessary to reach their full potential. Tonight, we speak on behalf of a vulnerable child named Brexton and many others like him who are being denied the services they are entitled to under federal law. Protecting vulnerable children is not optional. It is a legal and moral duty and responsibility. Under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and the requirements for a free, appropriate public education, every qualifying child has the right to an individualized education program. Denying these services is not only harmful, but unlawful. It places unnecessary burdens on families and prevents children from receiving the education and safety that they deserve. Brexton needs an IEP. He needs access to special education services that will help him learn, grow, and feel secure at school. Watching delays and disregard at recent school board meetings across America has deeply concerned us. These students are children who depend on the adults in this room to uphold their rights. We respectfully urge this board to restore trust by honoring the law and doing what is right. Prioritize the IDEA and FAPE compliance. Compliance with the IDEA and FAPE is not optional. We expect these services to be provided fully and without delay. A school district that protects its most vulnerable strengthens every family in the community. And we care for those who need help the most. We reflect the core purpose of public education itself. On behalf of Concerned Women for America and on behalf of the families who feel they have nowhere left to turn, we are asking you to take action. Give Brexton the IEP he needs, support him, and protect him. And ensure that no child in this district is ever denied their lawful right to learn and succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Miranda Larson.
Thank you for the board for having me up here today. I live in this district as a former teacher of CNUSD, where the complaints behind closed doors were that parents didn't care and the district, that we were teaching everything to those students. And on the flip side, we have parents that care and come to you and come to the district and come to their schools to fight for their children. They, a lot of times are not heard for what they need. And then they have to file lawsuits to get the district to care about their children enough to give them the services they actually need. The materials, the medical freedom, and the right to pursue educational freedoms for themselves. It would save the district so much money to listen to the parents that care so that they don't have to fight and take into account the children's civil rights and take actions to help the children outside of the box that we have created. I am so disappointed that a fellow teacher and educator has to come to the board meeting to make sure that the board is aware of how the superintendent is supervising special educational staff? That is not the district I was familiar with. How is the superintendent okay with meetings being canceled? People sent to attend meetings having no authority to resolve anything and complete an utter unprofessionalism? Are you okay with this? Is this how we take care of our children? Why is the superintendent okay with such subpar performance for our children? Special ed reports to the SUPE. It's not just special education leadership that you have a problem with. It's also the superintendent who is either aware of what your special education is doing to this student and the family or lacks the supervisory skills to be aware. You can either continue to empower the superintendent and special educational leadership by going along with whatever they tell you or really consider that you may not be getting the whole story. Am, as I am sure you may have already surmised, educational justice for Brexton? Give him an IEP. Don't be complicit in this continued violation of Brexton's civil rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Ortega. Do I have two cards for you?
I do. I have two topics.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. I am here tonight as a parent to share my family's experience regarding our son's abrupt placement without proper supports and to raise a broader concern about systematic issues that deeply affect children with disabilities in the district. Our son Koa has a very spiky profile. He is gifted in some areas with severe deficits in others. As parents new to the IEP system, we trusted the district when they said he only qualified under speech-language impairment despite clear signs of autism and a Level 2 autism diagnosis sent by our IRC advocate. At the time, it seemed he was just not autistic enough according to the district. He was placed in mild mod special ed pre-K, and we were told he would be there for two full years. In that supported environment, small class size, specialized trained staff, he thrived. He met all of his academic goals. Then suddenly, in the spring of 2025, without any proper notification, we were told he was going to be moved to the general ed TK class that same August. When I called the district, the only explanation I was given was that the state had changed the age requirements. At just three years old, he was being transitioned with no added supports. We were panicked, unprepared, and it truly felt like we were throwing our son into the water before he knew how to swim. We raised concerns. He was not yet potty trained. He had handwriting challenges. And he was moving from a highly-supported class to a large general ed class with zero added support. They essentially said that we would just see how he does and go from there. I want to be clear that we did not oppose the general ed placement, and we liked our IEP team. Our issue was the sudden change, lack of communication, and lack of support. To no one's surprise, upon starting the school year, he struggled. He struggled in ways that was completely preventable. We are now on a better path to supports, in part thanks to incredible staff working with him. But children should not have to struggle or regress before receiving appropriate help or eligibility. Watching your child fail and regress after making so much progress is an extremely painful thing for a parent to witness. That is a weight-to-fail model, and it contradicts the proactive collaborative intent of IDEA. Last year, he succeeded with the right support. This year, we basically had to prove his decline to qualify. When he progresses again, will he lose these services? Does he have to fail in order to keep what helps him succeed? Our story is not unique, clearly based on what I've been hearing tonight. It is clearly a pattern district-wide. If the true measure of a society is how it treats its most vulnerable, then we need to reflect on what this pattern says about our district. We need a system rooted in accuracy, transparency, accountability, and respect for both student and teacher needs. One where parent concerns are taken seriously and not minimized. Where no student or teacher are left struggling in silence while we fill out rooms of paperwork. Thank you. This is my next topic. Thank you again for allowing me to speak. My next topic is the clear lack of supports for students with disabilities and for the teachers who are expected to meet their unique needs in the general education setting. I want to begin by saying this is not about blaming teachers. I am an educator myself, but tonight I am speaking as a parent who is deeply concerned by what she sees. Our teachers, both gen ed and special ed, are overworked, underfunded, and undersupervised. What I'm speaking about tonight is a system that is asking teachers to do the impossible without giving them the support that they need to succeed. Right now, our classrooms across the district, including my son's, have multiple students with significant needs. There are emotional regulation challenges, communication difficulties, sensory issues, and severe behaviors linked to dysregulation. These are symptoms of disabilities that require specialized strategies, training, and support. But how could we realistically expect our teachers to implement all of these strategies and honor every single student's accommodations properly? It is simply not feasible. I have watched my son pick up behaviors, behaviors that are not his own, from other students who are also struggling because they too are not receiving the level of support they need. And our teachers and paras are the ones left trying to manage all of these needs while simultaneously teaching, planning, supervising, and supporting 20 or more other students at the same time. As a parent with a child with a disability, I do not expect a general education teacher to intuitively understand the complex needs of my son. However, his LRE is the general education classroom. And I believe that he can access that curriculum, but he can only do so with extensive support. Teachers need more help, more training, or more specialized staff on hand when multiple high-need students are placed in one single general education classroom. The push-in model is supposed to represent inclusion. But without proper staffing, training, or equipment, it becomes inclusion in name only. I see this with my own child. Without the proper supports, his behavior has ostracized him from his peers. And he has not met grade-level standards in several areas, and that is not inclusion. Students with disabilities lose access to what they need. General education students lose instructional time. Teachers are overwhelmed. Special ed staff are stretched thin by large caseloads. And parents feel frustrated and unheard. Tensions and mistrust rise between general ed teachers, sped teachers, service providers, and family when the real issue is that the district and administration have not provided any foundational support required for true inclusion. In the end, the students suffer most, students with IEPs and students without them. Our teachers want to help our kids. Our kids want to succeed. What's missing is the, what's missing is the support that makes it possible for both things to happen. Our children deserve better, and so do the people who show up every day to educate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Gwen Lehman.
Good evening, board. And thank you for letting me speak. My name is Gwen, and I'm an educator in this district. I've been here for 28 years. So I've seen it all. Every day, I see what is possible when teachers and specialists and administrators work together with integrity and dedication. My experience at my school is amazing. My, I have overwhelming support. I have an amazing supportive administrative. My collaborative IEP team has been incredible. My specialists, they work tirelessly. They are exhausted, but they do it for the good of the students. They are exhausted, but they do it for the good of the students because we always have the students in mind. I know how good it can be, and that's why I'm here tonight. Because what I have is not experienced, it's not the same at all schools. It's not, it's so different, and it's not fair. I'm not surprised Brexton's parents are here again today because their IEP process is not what I've experienced. It's poor, and it's not supporting them or their child. Mishaps and missteps are going to occur. The situation is different. It highlights, this situation is different, it highlights the deeper issue that we have. There are unofficial practices at Croninorko that do not benefit students equally. Services, supports, and even misplacement of students that should never be put in general ed without doing all the steps is happening at so many sites because it's being left to that site. It's being left to the IHP team, the administrators that are involved. It is vital that the team, the parents, and the decisions are worked through as a team, including the parents, and what they know is best for their children. Disagreements need to be handled with professionalism and respect. We know that this is not always happening around the district, and it's only hurting the students whom we are honored to serve. Too often, the IEP cases are being prolonged, not meeting the needs of the children that they need to meet. The procedural and legal conflicts and the timelines are stretched. The attorneys seem to be the only ones that are benefit from this. Not the families, not the children. We need to ask ourselves, who is actually being served with these delays? And if you cannot honestly say that it is the children, we are doing it wrong, and we need to fix that. This is not how we should be. I've been in the district 28 years. This is not who we were when I started this district. As board members, you need and you have the authority to restore the process to its true purpose that it needs. Helping children, meeting their needs, and doing what is right for these children. This family is not asking for anything lavish. They want to stay in Croninorko with our teachers, our specialists, and for Brexton to receive the support that he should have gotten all along. I urge you, as a district or as a board, to think about those children, the children that are in my classroom, the children you've heard about tonight, and keep them at the front. Because without the children, we are not a district. Please speak to the superintendent. Bring her back on track to what teachers need.
Thank you. Janice Raum.
I'm here today to speak in support of children who need special education services, children like Brexton. I want to invite the school board to reflect on what it truly means to represent your constituents, the families that depend on you to ensure that every student has access to the supports that they need to succeed. So I ask sincerely, is denying special education services in the best interest of the children and the families that you serve? When a child like Brexton is denied an IEP, it raises real concern about whether we are fully meeting our obligation to support all students, especially those who rely on services the most. I want to believe that every decision made in this district is guided by the best interest of the students, not by administrative pressures or internal preferences. I trust that you want what's best for every child and that you will carefully consider whether this decision reflects that commitment. I respectfully urge you to do what is right for Brexton and for all children who depend on your leadership to access the education that they are entitled to. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Kim McGarry.
My name is Kim, and thank you for allowing me time to speak. I am here today as a former teacher of CNUSD. I taught in the district for 20 years, and I have similar sentiments about the district changing how they do things and what I saw 20 years ago, 25 years ago when I first started to what I'm seeing happening currently. Special education is supposed to provide access to an appropriate education and services, and my concern is that the district is spending more money on attorney fees and lawsuits than it is on meeting the needs of these students. Attorneys are making so much money off of the district's inability to serve special ed students and fighting the lawsuits, and I've known several families within the district who have been battling just trying to advocate for their child and get the services that are required and needed. And I just don't understand how the district is okay with the increasing costs of the lawyers and the lawsuits and stuff versus being able to provide what's needed for the students. I have watched for years how the special education department is just, it's been in a battle and a battle and a battle. And I talk to more and more parents who are constantly having to advocate more and more for their kids and getting less. And I feel that this model isn't working for all of your students and families that are part of the district, especially in this case, Brexton Van Horn. I know that you all are dedicated to improving the education for all students, and I urge you to direct your superintendent to qualify this student. Making sure that all of the facts are out on the table and making sure that you're doing your due diligence and research to make sure that the leadership team is presenting the true facts and not just the story that they want you to believe, because there's more than one side of this story. Please stop empowering the bad decisions that continue to bring on the lawsuits. It saddens me that this is what it takes to hopefully get your attention, but I am happy to be a part of a movement to call your attention to how bad the superintendent is managing or not managing the special education. The superintendent is very nice and is just really not going and digging in and getting the facts and taking the leadership that's needed in this case. Thank you.
This is Nicola. I'm just going to be keeping the time on my phone because I'm having trouble with the timer here.
I spoke at the October meeting, and I gave a detailed description about my sons Max and Eli in hopes that speaking up at the meeting would help our family to get connected with the necessary personnel in the school district. However, after an entire month, I haven't heard from anyone. No one at the district. Not Dr. Burrell, not her assistant, and most certainly, not the director, Don Russ. Don Russ, who continues to ignore our concerns and continues to disregard multiple reports from multiple professionals through our IE meetings. It saddens and frustrates me that I keep speaking up, we keep speaking up, and we're treated like a tab on the agenda. That you have to listen to us, but nobody does anything. I don't even know Brexton, but that story sounds just like mine. And we moved here from a different district with huge hopes that we would get help. That's a totally different matter, though. My children's disabilities don't just go away while they're at school, which is what the school personnels imply. They say, "We don't see it," or, like that lady said, "Your child's just not autistic enough." What does that even mean? We've gotten denied from school personnel, district personnel, I can't even count how many meetings, IE meetings I've been in. My kids are on their way to high school, and we started here when they were in second Just thinking about it makes me so frustrated. I know a lot of the people in those meetings. I've got to know them personally. I know that their own children have IEPs, and they receive services. So those people should understand. Our old principal should have understood. She just ignored it. And somehow, what's good for their children isn't necessarily fair or good for my children. Do better. Our family advocate, the psychologist, have reached out to Dr. Burrell. We have been forgotten and dismissed. We have had multiple meetings with Don Russ, and she continues to deny multiple qualifying reports that show my son's disabilities citing illegal information and robbing my children of faith. Thank you.
Honestly, I'm absolutely astonished at what we've been hearing about your special education department in the last few school board meetings. It is truly appalling. I cannot believe what we're hearing tonight. I think, and I hope that you are also, how far does a mother have to go to get her child help? This is truly ridiculous. And she's one of your own. She is one of your own. She has dedicated so much of her time and her energy to this school district. Fighting a school district is a daunting task. But my hat's off to you. Van Horn family for pursuing what's right for your child and what he needs and deserves. Brexton needs an IEP. These other kids need better. These teachers need better. I hope that you have heard them all because they are here speaking from their hearts. Thank you.
Ainsley Fields.
My name is Ainsley, and I'm here because I used to be in Ms. Van Horn's class, and I also know Brexton well. I want to say this as clearly as I can. Ms. Van Horn is the best teacher I have ever had in my whole life. She made me actually love learning again after I felt pretty defeated. She made me feel safe and happy at school, like I could do anything. She believed in me, and that made me believe in myself. She even inspired my mom, too. Because she helped me so much, I know how important it is for kids to get the help they need. And Brexton really, really needs support. He deserves the same chance I got, to feel understood, to feel proud of himself, and to have supportive grownups that believe in him, who believe in him and help him thrive in school, not just survive. I also want to say what everyone else has been saying. Please look out for kids like Brexton. Kids like him need you to stand up for them. Please qualify him for his IEP so he can get the help he needs, too. Thank you. Thank you for being a phenomenal teacher, Ms. Van Horn.
I just want to say quickly that I hope that you guys can teach a little girl that one voice matters, one vote matters, that what she has to say matters, because that's really important. I'm really proud of you.
Thank you, Ainsley. Next is Sharice Terry.
Never done this before, and I have all of speech prepared, and I cry when I public speak because I'm so nervous. So bear with my tears. I'm going to not even read my speech because I'm just going to summarize that my kid is actually a success story of the special ed department here at CNUSD. He's a sophomore at Santiago. He's a 4.5 GPA. He has autism. He is in regular classes. He is getting his driver's license next month. But you know why he is incredible? Because when he started in 2012, this was a whole different place. He got the services he needed. I didn't have to fight. And when he was diagnosed with autism, you know what I was told by Kaiser? He wouldn't talk. He wouldn't go to school. He wouldn't do anything. And here's a form to get conservatorship, and he'll probably live in a home at some point in his life. He is going to go to college and be something special because of this school district, because of teachers like Ms. Davis he had in eighth grade, Mrs. Marsh, she was his case carrier. There are amazing teachers in this room. He is incredible because of them, because of CNUSD. Guess what? I have two other kids, and it's a whole other ballgame, and it is garbage. I can't get a kid from a 504 to an IEP. I can't get my autistic kid who's in kindergarten that's not autistic enough any help. This is a whole other school district, but I can't hire an advocate for three kids. I hired it for my first one when things started going south, when he was suspended multiple times in first grade. And I got what I needed again, and everybody supported me. Sixth grade, they tried to take his IEP away because now he's not autistic enough. He's too smart. He's an Elon Musk, Bill Gates kind of kid. You can give him any test, he's going to do awesome. But he can't socialize, he can't emotionally regulate, and he has a one-to-one aide from a private agency because behaviors were so bad in elementary school that the district agents couldn't even do anything with him. But I got all that because I hired somebody, because I drained my bank account and I drained my credit cards, because that's what you have to do to get help. And I'm willing to do it, and I'm okay being in a district that if you can do that, you can get your services. But I can't even get services draining my bank account from my other kids. I can't get, I get an email from Claire Puno with the response email box full. How are you even in a district position and your email box is full? I can't get any help. I have an IE from fall of 2024 that has yet to even be, I keep getting a bounce back from the district. This person, it's too many miles. This person doesn't have this insurance. This person doesn't have this. And I even had an email saying it was approved, and then I got a phone call a week later saying, "Sorry, I sent that out premature." It is so sad to see the district that I loved, that I've been in for 13 years, and I've got a kindergartner. I'm going to be here another 12. I used to rave about this district, everybody, how awesome my kid is because of it, and now I have to cry and pout just to get something from my other kids that have problems. Thank you for your time.
Angela Van Horn. Angela.
So I want to start by thanking trustees Rahaga and Merchant for their willingness to individually meet with me and hearing my concerns from a parent perspective. And thank you truly for really caring about all students at CNUSD, and I look forward to meeting with you, trustee Cortez and Mesa as well, next week. Next, I am so disheartened to have had to come back this month again because I had sincerely hoped that this matter would be resolved. But I am so confident that we can work together to come up with a collaborative resolution. But I am so confident that we can work together to come up with a collaborative resolution. Brexton needs an IEP. He needs CNUSD professionals to provide an appropriate education and services. And we have an absolutely incredible, amazing SLP, Emma Delgado at Todd Elementary. We love her, as well as other professionals. Also, I wanted to communicate directly with the board because I do worry that sometimes things get lost in translation. This is about Brexton first and foremost. This is about not letting him fail and then swooping in with the IEP he needs later. And I'd like to introduce you to him again. And I know that you do not want to let this kid fail. Let's please work together on this. I am seeking for my son to continue to be eligible for an IEP and related services. And I so appreciate, Anna, that you texted me before this because I was in tears earlier before having to come back again today. I would also like to meet with the other trustees to explain to you what is happening from a parent's perspective. You should know that it is extremely intimidating to be at odds with so many professionals at a district that I'm very proud to work in. And let me say that again. I am very proud to work here. And I just want what is appropriate for Brexton. He needs an IEP. Please, let's not wait for him to fail and then slip through the cracks and then wish we would have put into action what we claim when we talk about the importance of early intervention. My heart is absolutely broken thinking about how Brexton will lose all of the gains that he's made from receiving services once you take them away.
Ben Benhorn.
Hi, I'm Brexton's dad. I can't tell you as a parent how challenging it is to raise a son with autism. It's very clear CNUSD has a one-size-fits-all approach to eligibility here. The responses we hear in IEP meetings all sound like your attorneys are preparing a script for district employees. When did this become the norm? I can tell you, I can't tell you how many times I was told, we just don't see that, we just don't see that, we just don't see that. My son has already, was already retained a year, and then and there are upwards of 30 kids in the class, not sure what they could see. Your staff constantly insinuated that my son is not severe enough. This sounds like predetermination to me. This sounds like one-size-fits-all approach. My son was stabbed with a pencil. He teased a friend relentlessly, could not read the nonverbal social cues and facial expressions of the friend. Continued teasing, and then the friend stabbed him. The social skills deficits he has are putting him at a continued risk of harm. Your staff did not even document what happened. You would not know what is going on by talking to your staff. Some of them are not even talking to each other. Brexton also instigated a fight by telling a student to "go get him", referring to another kid. Actually, "go get him", it's more like that. It's not smooth, like I said. Then they walked, then Brexton just walked away like nothing happened. Also, no behavior report. This is just another phone call. Are you guys noticing a pattern? No documentation of behavior issues? You should also know, when Angela requested Brexton's records, she had to file a compliance complaint to get the records from Amy Shainman, the principal at Todd Elementary. After that, the principal has had it out for my wife. Your staff has unofficial practice and policy in outputting behavior reports and issues in the special education slash cumulative folder. Why is there a practice of noting behavior issues in dojo and over phone calls? Notice that these are not part of the education file. What I'm trying to tell you is the people in special education who are telling you that they have it under control, they don't. They are part of the problem. You, as a board, can either empower these bad, unlawful actions, or you can stand by our children. Please, let's work together. Our son deserves support and needs an IEP. Please stand with our son and not against him. That's what I wrote out, so I wouldn't forget everything. I want to circle back to what Mom was saying earlier. If these kids are getting put on an IEP, there's a reason for it. So when they get on it, of course, the reason they're getting on it is to assist them to do better in school. And then it's working. But then you guys are using that as leverage against them and saying, oh, you're good. See, now you're fine. If they're put on it in the first place, they need it. If you're gonna rip the rug under them, from under them, and they don't have the assistance anymore, what do you guys think is gonna happen to them? They're gonna fall right back to where they were that got them qualified in the first place. And then it's gonna be a non, it's just gonna be a cycle, so please consider that. I appreciate your time.
Quentin Quair.
My name is Erin Ogas. I'm also on there. Yes. Good evening, President Nicola, members of the board, superintendent, and CNUSD staff. My name is Erin Ogas, and I am a parent of a Norco high school student, athlete, and a proud member of this community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your continued commitment to our students and families. I am here because our student, not just our football program, have been deeply impacted by the recent decision involving alleged CIF bylaw 510 violations that led Norco High School forfeiting its seasons. Many families still feel confused about what happened and how the decision was reached. We are simply asking for clarity, transparency, and fairness. For the public, I want to briefly explain what bylaw 510 concerns. It focuses on undue influence, which includes any act of communication that might be seen as encouraging a student to enroll at a school for athletic reasons. This includes direct or indirect contact, pre-enrollment conversations about athletics, attending events to observe a student, or any involvement with a student before they officially enroll. Families transferring schools must sign a CIF affidavit affirming that no one from the new school's athletic program contacted them before enrollment. In this particular case, we were informed that a specific issue involved pre-enrollment contact. However, based on what many of us have learned, key steps that have, should have been occurred during the intake and verification process did not happen. For instance, the required questions in meetings with the site athletic director at the time, Mr. John Cabrera, reportedly never took place before the VCR paperwork was submitted to administration. This raises legitimate concerns about whether the process was followed correctly on the school's end. Our student, who had no involvement in any administrative oversight, were the ones who suffered the consequences. Families want to know, was this investigation complete and thorough? Were all required steps taken by CNUSD personnel before submitting documentation to CIF? Were alternative solutions or appeals considered before imposing the harshest possible outcome? We are not here to assign blame. We are here because we believe that students should not be punished for adults' mistakes, miscommunications, or missed procedures. Tonight, we respectfully ask the board and district leaders to review the situation, ensure all procedures were properly followed, and provide the community with greater transparency. Our students deserve clarity, fairness, and trust in a system that governs their academic and athletic lives. Thank you for your time in listening to our concerns. We hope to work together towards solutions that protect students and strengthen confidence in the CNUSD process. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Guerra.
Good evening, President Nicola, members of the board, superintendent, and CNUSD staff. My name is Melanie Guerra, and I'm a parent of a Norco high school student, athlete, and a proud member of this community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your continued commitment to our students and families. The penalties issued in response to the recent allegations were severe. Two coaches, Coach Brock Newton and Coach Mustafa Johnson, were immediately removed from the football staff. Norco was forced to forfeit six wins. And several students were barred from participating in the final game of the season despite having no role in any alleged wrongdoing. We were told that these penalties are outlined in the CIF bylaws. The blue book states that when there is a prima facie case, meaning sufficient evidence, of undue influence, a student may be ruled ineligible for one year. It also states that failure to disclose pre-enrollment communication may result in forfeitures, removal from playoffs, and loss of awards. However, the bylaw also makes one key point very clear. All penalties depend on credible evidence, evidence that is trustworthy, reasonable, and based on more than speculation or rumor. This is where many of our concerns arise. The process and severity of punishment in Norco's case are inconsistent with how similar allegations have been handled elsewhere in CNUSD. For example, Pipeline Volleyball, where two top trainers also coached at a CNUSD school, has not faced forfeitures or suspensions. West Coast Elite, an AAU basketball program with a CNUSD coach, has not been penalized. Multiple club trainers regularly use CNUSD facilities to train athletes, which could also be interpreted as pre-enrollment contact under CIF's broad definition. These situations are no different from the allegations made against Norco High School, yet Norco's case was handled dramatically different and with the harshest penalties possible. This inconsistency raises serious questions. Why were Norco students and coaches punished immediately while similar situations across the district received no comparable action? Our community is not, oh, and why were students, who did nothing wrong, punished for alleged administrative failures or miscommunications? Was the evidence truly credible and sufficient under CIF standards? Our community is not asking for special treatment. We are asking for fair and consistent treatment and for decisions that are grounded in clear evidence and not assumptions. Our students deserve a process that is transparent, impartial, and equitable across the entire district. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Brittany Romero.
Good evening, President Nicola, members of the board, superintendent, and CNUSD staff. My name is Brittany Romero, and I am a parent of a Norco high school student, athlete, who is also a proud member of this community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your continued service to our students and families. Tonight, I want to address the events that led to Norco High School football season being forfeited and the ongoing concerns our families have about the handling of this situation. The process began with an anonymous allegation claiming that several student athletes did not live at the addresses listed on their transfer paperwork. CNUSD investigated this claim, including home visits conducted by district athletic director, Mr. Aaron Shears, and Mr. Eric Vitier, who is not listed on the CNUSD staff directory, leaving us unsure of his role or whether he is a CNUSD employee. That investigation was unfounded. After that, a second anonymous complaint alleged pre-enrollment contact between two coaches and athletes. The evidence shared was a screenshot of a March social media post stating, "I am blessed to be able to train with some of the best coaches in the nation", tagging multiple coaches. The complaint was screenshot one day after the post, but CNUSD did not act on it for seven months. We were told that CIF Southern Section sent this information to CNUSD. However, Assistant Commissioner Joe Hoggett has stated that CIF Southern Section did not possess this information and that all questions should be directed to the school or the district. At the same time, CIF Southern Section directed us to send all further inquiries to their legal counsel, Ms. Diane Marshall Freeman of F3 Law, which represents CIF and all 10 sections. To date, several questions remain unanswered by CNUSD, CIF Southern Section, or CIF Legal Counsel. These include whether CIF or CIF Southern Section initiated, directed, or advised CNUSD regarding the alleged bylaw 510 violations, whether any findings or determinations were issued to CNUSD, the timeline of communication between CIF and CNUSD, whether CIF mandated or required the forfeitures imposed on Norco High School, what rights or processes exist for review, appeal, reconsideration, or waiver, student-athlete protections if coaching personnel are removed, including whether athletes would qualify for hardship transfers without penalty, what documentation CIF would require to support such applications. We have submitted a Public Records Act request to CNUSD to help clarify these issues. The district has notified us that the evaluation period has been extended an additional 14 days before we will receive a response. Per Mr. Shears, he received the allegation on October 20th and made the decision October 29th. However, a coach from Roosevelt
The time has expired.
Louis Wong.
Good evening. I appreciate the board for giving the time for me to speak today. My name is Louis Wong, and I appreciate this. A little background on me, I've been involved in the city of Corona for a long time. I spent about 10 years coaching the Corona Chargers program where I've built many value relationships. I am also a detective for a large agency in LA County. I have over 20 years of investigative experience. From my many years of experience, the first rule of investigation I was taught was that all investigation must be approached with impartiality and unbiased because the price of wrongful conviction would cost the city millions to litigate. We are always taught to find, to find ways to eliminate your suspect through evidence, because when you finally come to a suspect you can't eliminate. Now you have the ripe perpetrator of the crime. Bias in investigation clouds your judgment or provide an outcome that you favor yourself, whether it benefits you or someone that you care for. I'm not going to rehash this investigation, as it always been, already been stated. But I would focus on the fact that Mr. Shire should have recused himself in this investigation as Norco gained forfeitures directly benefited his previous school, Roosevelt, and also his hire, the head coach of Roosevelt. Mr. Shire made prompt judgment of the video on the on the paid group workout at Norco High School approved by the school administration involving two of the suspended players. Mr. Shire did not interview the coaches, the parents, or the players regarding those videos and handed down the penalty promptly. The two short videos did not have any context or undue influence, as how you can tell a conversation was ever had with the two transfer players in those short video clips. There's no context whatsoever. In my meeting with Mr. Shire on November 3rd, I provided evidence of undue influence by CNUSD coaches via social media DMs and text messages in an attempt to recruit a Norco football player to play football at the prospective CNUSD school. During the meeting, Mr. Shire attempted to justify his DM and texts by questioning the context of those messages, although the message itself was as plain as, "Come play for me." I wonder why he was so quick to make judgment on Norco's two video clips, but quick to dismiss the recruitment of Norco players. It has been over two weeks since that meeting. Those accused coaches were still coaching the playoff game. I also provided information on how the particular coach in one of the programs coached for a high-profile seven-on-seven organization. And that seven-on-seven organization also had a high five-star elite recruit that ended up at their school later on that year. CIF bylaw clearly states that that is a violation in itself for undue influence. I ask you why the unfair treatment of our coaches, as they were promptly suspended, and the other two CNUSD coaches are still coaching. Do we have a racism issue in CNUSD, or why are suspended coaches who are African-American and the two coaches that are not suspended are white? Thank you for your time.
Ronald Foster. Ronald Foster.
Good evening, board members. My name is Quinn Foster, and I am the parent of a Norco High student athlete and a proud member of the community. I'm also a Norco alumni, and I also coached most of these boys in their youth years. I'm here to speak tonight for the continued commitment, or I thank you for your opportunity to speak tonight and for your continued commitment to our students and families. Tonight, I want to address a critical point that has been overlooked in the handling of recent allegations against Norco High School. Based on everything we have learned, this situation should have been handled under CIF bylaw 503 administrative oversight, not as recruiting or undue influence. Bylaw 503 makes one thing absolutely clear. The school's administration is responsible for ensuring all paperwork, eligibility forms, and transfer documents are properly completed and submitted. It also states that if an ineligible student competes because the schools failed to submit the correct paperwork in a timely manner and that student would have been granted eligibility had the paperwork been submitted, then the issue falls under administrative oversight, not athlete or coach misconduct. The CIF penalty for administrative oversight is explicit and much lighter than what Norco received. The school forfeits only the first game won or tied, regardless of how many games the student played. The school must submit a corrective action plan approved by the principal and superintendent. A follow-up report is submitted at the end of the year confirming corrections were made. Only a second offense within the same school year leads to an additional consequence, losing the right to host the first playoff game. None of the penalties under bylaw 503 include removing coaches, forfeiting an entire season of wins, or barring players from participation. If this situation resulted from administrative failures, including a lack of proper intake, missed questions, or incomplete transfer procedures, then the athletes and coaches should not have been punished for the mistakes they did not make. Based on the CIF's own rules, the response to the situation should have been proportional, corrective, and administrative, not punitive towards students and staff. Therefore, we respectfully request reinstatement of the removed coaches, submission of the proper paperwork to CIF in accordance with the bylaw 503, restoration of eligibility for the affected athletes, no further disciplinary actions against Norco football related to this investigation. This is not just about athletes. It's about fairness. It's about following CIF's rules consistently. And most importantly, it's about protecting students from being harmed by adults and administrative oversight. Thank you for your time and your commitment to ensuring that all students at CNUSD are treated with fairness and kindness. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie Benaz.
Good evening, school board members and cabinet. November is National Diabetes Month, and last Friday, November 14th, was World Diabetes Day. So, many of our students and families across CNUSD are affected by diabetes, and it has very real effects on their daily school experience, emotionally, medically, and academically. That's why raising awareness is so important. Awareness leads to acceptance, understanding, and stronger support systems for the students who live with the condition every day. As both a teacher and a parent of two children with type 1 diabetes, I see firsthand the challenges our kids face. In my classroom, I've watched students push through symptoms that most adults would struggle with. They check their blood sugar during lessons, count carbs at lunch, treat unpredictable highs and lows, and sometimes sit out of activities while they're waiting to feel stable enough to participate. As a parent, I also know the constant fear that comes with sending your child to school. You hope their blood sugar stays in a safe range. You hope a low is caught quickly. You hope adults around them recognize the signs of emergency. For students with diabetes, school is more than academics. It's the act of managing a life-threatening medical condition while trying to learn, socialize, and feel normal. This can mean frequent visits to the health office, missing instruction to stabilize blood sugar, accessing snacks and water without questions or stigma, and relying on trained staff who understand their medical needs. When staff are confident and prepared, students feel included, supported, and secure. I have noticed the focus on building awareness across the district this year to many issues our students face, and I'm so grateful for that. I have to thank my own admin and PTA, Garrettson, for doing a great job with bringing attention to these issues. It's so important for the kids to feel that compassion and safety. I also want to take a moment tonight to thank my colleagues who are here from CNTA who helped bring awareness to National Diabetes Month by wearing blue and encouraging educators across the district to show their support as well tonight. Thank you, educators, for your compassion, your visibility, and your commitment to recognize a condition that impacts so many of our students. Your leadership and willingness to stand with our families means more than you know. Awareness should inspire action. As a district, we can continue strengthening our supports by ensuring staff receive updated training on recognizing symptoms and responding to emergencies, supporting health offices so that students don't feel like a burden when they need help, protecting students from stigma when they eat, drink, or test outside of typical routines, and improving communication so families feel like true partners in their childcare. Our students with diabetes are athletes, musicians, scientists, leaders, and friends. They are brave, resilient, and incredibly capable. They're doing something profoundly difficult, balancing the demands of school while managing a medical condition. Thank you for taking the time to acknowledge National Diabetes Month and for your continued commitment to their safety and health. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment. We're going to take a five-minute recess and come back to employee association reports. I'll see you back in five minutes.
Take off? She good. She had to go to school. Oh, she did? Okay, well, that'll cut us, you know, all of her whole long presentation. We'll go quicker. Okay, so, moving into our employee association report, starting with CNTA.
Is this on? Okay. Is it on? Okay. Good evening, President Nicola, Board members, Cabinet, and our educational community. I want to address two agenda items tonight. The first is item seventeen B, in which it is recommended that you approve our tentative agreement. Our members turned out in such great numbers to ratify this contract. Seventy-six percent of our members said they wanted to have a say, and of those, sixty-seven percent said yes. But we are here tonight to make sure you very clearly know what that yes means. That yes means that we care about each other more than the district cares about us. That yes means we wanted to make sure not a single member took a pay cut. That yes means we are standing together and continuing to grow our strength, and that yes means we begin now to plan and organize for this coming spring. The yes means we think you have far too much money in reserves, money that should be spent making sure students have the best education. That yes means we are falling further and further behind the total compensation our surrounding districts provide to their certificated staff. That yes means it is not okay that the health benefits our administrators in the district receive are significantly more than what certificated and classified staff receive. There is not another district in this area that this is the case because it is simply not okay. That yes means you put more and more and more and more on our shoulders and are giving us less and less to make sure we are supported and appreciated. I urge you to vote yes on the TA, because if you don't, most of our members will literally take a pay cut when our insurance costs skyrocket in January. But with this vote, I hope you will pledge to do better. And as we head into the spring bargain, which brings me to the second item I want to highlight, fourteen K. Thank you for writing the resolution recognizing December second as National Special Education Day. I want you to keep this resolution in mind when our bargaining team returns to the conversation around our special education class sizes this spring, especially our preschool classes. Let your actions speak to this resolution and not just be words on a page. Thank you very much.
Moving into our superintendent's report. Oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry about that. CSCA.
Love for not forgetting about us. I appreciate that. Members of the board, superintendent, cabinet, thank you guys very much for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. I sit on a board, and I often tell speakers, "Don't worry, you're just here with the normal people." It's absolutely nerve-wracking being right here in front of this podium, so, just so that you're aware. My name is Joshua Lyman. I am the acting administrator for three six nine. CSCA Board of Directors, which I sit on, I am the Association Secretary, and vote policy six oh seven. Six oh seven allows for the state to come in and take over all the affairs of the chapter. As of this moment, I am the administrator, and I will be assuming all contact points for CSCA for the foreseeable future. I'm going to breathe, so I don't look like I'm panicking and trembling in front of you, even though my knees are doing this right now. With that being said, I'd also like to introduce my partner in crime, Heidi. Heidi Holliday, please.
Thank you. Good morning, or good evening. A little delirious from how late it is. Thank you so much for having us. As Josh mentioned, we are here, we've assumed with an administratorship. I am the field director over at our Rancho Cucamonga Field Office, so I'll work very closely with our labor reps as we continue this venture.
My information has been given to everybody here off to the sides, and I'm hoping that that has been given to you guys. I also, tomorrow morning, will reach out individually with an email with a little bio and a little rundown of who I am and what we're here to do. I'm looking forward to a collaborative relationship, maintaining the ones that you guys have, and making stronger the relationships that we may build in the future. Thank you very much for affording me the time, and looking forward to meeting with you all. Oh, most definitely. I got to meet Ben, also phenomenal guy. Man of many words, many, many words.
But you don't know Mr. Williams until you've got the dad jokes, so. Until you get the dad jokes, you don't really know Mr. Williams. Josh, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Sorry about that. Just so you know, it's also nerve-wracking up here on this side of the room. Yeah, so, just saying. All right. Now we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Nicola. All right, before I get started, I just want to say once again, congratulations to Roosevelt High School Girls' Flag Football Team for winning the Southern Section Division III Championship. It's really amazing to see that this is our first CIF win ever in girls' flag football, so I'm very happy that we got to honor them tonight. I also wanted to let everyone know about the employee survey we rolled out, an employee survey in October, to the entire district, and we had great participation in the survey. I want to personally thank the over twenty-two hundred employees who took the time to complete it. Your participation shows a real commitment to shaping the future of our district and making sure every voice is heard, and we take all your feedback seriously, and we will all be reviewing all the responses to help guide our decisions. And classified employee recognition, just wanted to acknowledge that we proudly celebrated sixty-three classified employees at the annual Classified Employee of the Year event on November sixth. It was a great chance to recognize the dedication, hard work, and huge impact that our classified staff makes across the district. So I just want to say thank you to all our amazing classified employees for everything that you do. Our schools truly couldn't run without you. Also, I would like to acknowledge our elementary teachers for all their hard work in completing their first-ever standards-based report cards. I know that this was a big undertaking, and I appreciate your commitment in seeing it through. And I know last month, we had the presentation about our California School Dashboard, our projected results, so just wanted everybody to know that the results were officially released on November thirteenth, and CNUSD definitely has a lot to be proud of. So in both our power objectives, areas of literacy, and math, our dashboard color was green, which the best colors are green or blue, and so we had green as a result of our district having one of the highest state testing scores in the entire county in math and in English Language Arts. Even more impressive, our CNUSD outpaces the state average in the percentage of students who meet literacy, math standards by nearly six percentage points, and in literacy, but, I'm sorry, in math standards by nearly six percentage points, and in literacy by nearly ten percentage points. And we also earned the green designation for our college and career indicator, and the highest designation of blue for our graduation rates. So this success does not happen by chance, obviously, and it's a result that reflects the incredible work of our scholars who work very hard every day, our families that support them, and of course, our educators and support staff who make the school experience meaningful, engaging, and rigorous for every student. Also, we had professional development. Even with all that success, we're still continuing to provide high-quality professional development for our educators. Our elementary teachers have been attending the Power Objective Training in Math and ELA, while our secondary math and ELA teachers also attended subject matter training. So I'd like to thank our amazing teachers, support staff, and district trainers for their continuous improvement mindset as we continue to refine our practice to serve our students. And lastly, just wanted to put a plug out there for child nutrition. We have more than thirty-three thousand meals that are served in school every day. Reminder that all students can enjoy school breakfast, lunch, at no cost, so two meals during the school day, and if they stay after school, they also get another meal for free as well. So for more information, make sure you visit the child nutrition website. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dahlia. And next up, we have our board member report, but our diligent little school board member has left the building to get ready for school tomorrow, so we thank her for her report and these dates that she shared, these different events we will share with the board. So that takes us into our board member reports, and we will start with our most experienced member, not our most senior member, Mary Ibarra.
She doesn't want to say grandma, but.
Hey, I'm a grandma.
Oh, you're a grandma, too?
I'm a grandma, too.
Okay, fabulas. Okay, I had a ten-page report, but they told me not to say so much, so I'll just say a few things. I attended the Teacher of the Year Celebration. We celebrated our wonderful teachers who were selected by their peers, and congratulations to each of those teachers. Wow, where did everybody go? They got scared because I said ten pages. I know you stayed, yeah, you had, you had to. I was also, I know, I was also honored to join the family of Jose Tapia, a CNUSD security guard who recently passed away. Jose worked for the Adult Ed Program. His wife is a secretary at Harada, who has been in our district for a long time. Please keep him in your thoughts and prayers, the family. It was, it was very well attended, I mean, there must have been over three hundred people in, in the church. We also had a very outstanding council PTA meeting, where we were reminded about the juvenile diabetes by Natalie Benaz, and the dangers our students can have if not taken care immediately. And I'd like to thank all of our, our nurses at the schools who take care of our students and know what they need, and, and our teachers that see the students and know what's going on with these, these students. We also, I also attended the Classified Employee of the Year. Congratulations to our recipients, it was, it was a great event. I was at the D-LAC meeting last Friday, which is always a very important meeting. This is where we give our parents updates on information. As you heard today from Carlos Flores, sometimes these parents don't understand, but they have translators. We have so many translators in that room. I mean, we have Arabic, we have Mandarin, we have all these languages, and they're, they're telling the parents what is going on and what is the latest and the updates of the education for their children. We were at Garretson Elementary yesterday for a visit. It was great to see the students on task and engaged. We were even able to be part of the recess. Seeing all the energy released on the playground was great, before it started raining, but what was most fun was watching Dr. Goings, Chris, and Anna go down the slide in the Kinder Playground. And someone almost got stuck going down the slide. We were ready to go and pull him down because he's like, "Ah!" But it, you know, it's fun, the kids were watching him and laughing, and they thought it was just the greatest thing that ever happened. The teachers are very happy when we go visit their schools, and when we miss some of the classrooms, they're like, "You didn't come to my classroom, you know, I wanted to show you what's going on." So thank you to all the teachers that are out there doing the greatest things for our students. And that is the end of my ten-page report.
All right. I will stick with my ten-page report, so I apologize now. I had the pleasure, pleasure with, along with my colleagues, to, to go to the Norco Chamber First Responders Lunch, the Teacher of the Year Celebration, Classified Member of the Year Celebration, went to several site visits, Rosa Parks, Reagan, where Dr. Goings lost, unfortunately, in a tetherball match to a fourth grader, but better luck next time. She was good. Roosevelt, and then Garretson, and all, I, nothing but great things seen at all of the schools. Lot of positive things happening. I did attend a, the Financial Literacy Workshop team meeting with Sophie Chen, who's a student at Roosevelt, who began this Financial Literacy Workshop last year through FBLA, and has continued it this year through FBLA going to each of the elementary schools in Eastville, and teaching financial literacy to our students in, in elementary, which is just amazing. I think it's great, and she had statistics and data to back up what they're teaching, and that the students are getting something out of it, and it was, it was really, it was great to see. And hopefully, that could be multiplied across the district, because I think it's, it's awesome, and it gives our students this leadership capacity that, that they're able to pass that information on to these younger students. It's just great to see. Besides that, that's it. That concludes my report, thank you.
No, I'm kidding. Okay, so, in our community, I volunteered at the settlement house empty bowls event, where I enjoyed the live entertainment, and I enjoyed the conversations I had with our classified employees who also volunteered at the event. I attended the Veterans Memorial Dedication and Ribbon Cutting Ceremony at Corona City Hall. The unveiling of the memorial was beautiful, and I highly encourage everyone to visit the site at, at City Hall. I had the pleasure of attending the First Concert Choir of the Year at Norco High School, and I am not exaggerating when I say the music and the choreography were phenomenal. The students worked very hard in their performance, and it showed. I look forward to attending more performances at Norco High School. I participated in the pumpkin carving event with the students at El Cerrito Middle School, and the event was a lot of fun and a lot of work. Takes a lot of work to carve a pumpkin. I attended the Ribbon Cutting Ceremony for our Academy of Innovation, and I'm glad to see that our chameleons now have a permanent home in my trusty area. I attended the CNUSD Road to Opportunity Event, but I'm going to let Stacy share more about that. And I attended the Unified Sports Event held at Pollard High School, where students with special needs enjoyed playing bocce on the field. I especially enjoyed that bocce was chosen because the game allows students in wheelchairs to participate, too. I attended the Teacher of the Year Celebration held at Centennial High. Congratulations to all of our Teachers of the Year from their respective school sites. I also attended the Classified Employee of the Year Celebration held at Corona High School. Congratulations to all our classified employees as well. I watched the Sharks and the Panthers play on the field at Santiago High School, and attended CIF Round One to support our Sharks as they competed against Poly Riverside. I had the pleasure of attending the trunk-or-treat night at Washington Elementary. I appreciated the invitation from Ms. Lathrop. Her staff and parents organized an incredible Halloween event, complete with the haunted house, and the food was authentic and delicious. The event was very well attended and enjoyed by the community. I attended the RCOE Student of the Month Awards held at Pollard High School, and congratulations to all our student winners from their respective high schools. I love this student recognition program because RCOE not only celebrates academic achievement, but also honors the perseverance of students who have overcome significant challenges during high school. My school site visits this month included Santiago High School, Reagan Elementary, Adams Elementary, Wilson Elementary, and Garretson Elementary. During the visits, I learned about the progress our schools are making with their S-Back scores. In fact, Adams Elementary had a table dedicated to Orange Crush, and offered us the refreshment to show that they're truly crushing it at Adams Elementary. I want to congratulate all our schools for increasing their S-Back scores. Your hard work and teamwork are making a difference, and we see it. Thank you so much for all you do.
I forgot to announce that Saturday, we're having a huge turkey giveaway and food drive. It's going to be at Corona High from nine to eleven. We have, right now, four hundred and fifty turkeys to give away, and we should have five hundred by Saturday, thanks to a huge donation we got from some really great people. So Corona High School, spread the word, Saturday from nine to eleven, and if you want to help, get there at seven in the morning, because we need to bag the food. Thank you.
If you would like to know where I went, you can follow me at Jamie Merchant, CNUSD, Board of Education Trustee. I post, usually weekly posts. I would just like to highlight a couple things. I had two teachers at Santiago High School, Laura Larson and Allison, I know I'm going to mess up her last name, but Pledge Beanie, I believe that's how you pronounce it, they're two AP Lit teachers that invited me for one of their projects that they were doing, and it's profiles in complex text to help them break up the text to do more analytical thinking and connections. And it was amazing, it was very hands-on, it was like a crime scene board. They read this one text, this page, a couple pages, and it was, it was, and they had to make it who they felt that the people looked like, and then draw connections with yarn to them and stuff like that. So then afterwards, she reported that the scores for proficiency went up last year for the exact same project, except just not taught in this context, was twenty-seven percent, went up to forty percent. So AP Lit teachers, email them, Laura Larson, and figure this out, because it was an amazing project, and the students loved it. The other thing that I want to ask is, is really from the district. We are not doing a good enough job supporting our teachers with our special needs students that are in the process of getting diagnosed or undiagnosed, especially in the Kinders and the TK classes. And these teachers, they're struggling. I'm seeing it firsthand. It's not just rumor or talk or a couple isolated incidents, it is happening probably at every single school in most of the younger kids' classrooms. The teachers are not, they're being, the students are being identified, and then they're saying, "Well, they don't really qualify for an SDC class, so you guys are just going to have to figure it out." to have to figure it out." And they have the one para in there for kinder, but that para isn't meant to be a one-on-one aide, but that's what it's turning into be just out of necessity to get through the school day. So we really need to provide more support for our teachers, and we need to listen to them. When they're calling and begging and asking for help, we need to send it. We can't just keep thinking that it's going to figure it out. So that is it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so a few things I want to mention, and I'm going to try to hurry. Anna alluded to the CNUSD Road to Opportunity, and I just want to mention what a fabulous event that was. It seems like it was a long time ago, but it was an amazing opportunity for members of our community, teachers, and, and some of the staff to see what's going on in our CTE program at Norco High. And, and it was just a great opportunity to really make the connections between what's happening in our schools to what's, we're looking at needing in, in future employment for, in the community as far as what employers are looking for in their, their hires. And then even, we, we learned about the teacher apprenticeship program, and, and that's something that we're really excited about. So anyway, the Road to Opportunity comms did an amazing job. Thank you so much. It was, we were trying something new, and I always think new things are, can sometimes be challenging, but I feel like even despite the rain, it was a wonderful day and, and it was something exciting and new. And I think it got some, I, I know at least at Norco High that, you know, they're very proud to showcase some of their programs there. I want to thank everybody that came to Combat Cancer Walk. My whole entire board came, and it made me very emotional and very, I felt very supported by the board. Thank you all for being there. And a lot of our district admin and, and teachers and staff, thank you so much. The Support Sisters, early numbers are showing that we, that they raised over $150,000 just on that, just on the walk alone. So it's very successful, and we, we, I really appreciate all of the support from the different schools that send students. We had so many students from everything, from our, from our cheer to band to key club and associated student body. There, it was just, it was a great collaborative event. I want to mention Norco Elementary's Veterans Day Assembly, so special. They do this every year, and it was so sweet and, and a little bit emotional to see the veterans there, their community members, family members of the students that were being honored in light of Veterans Day, and listening to the students sing. And I went there in my school board president capacity and discovered that my eight-year-old niece was one of three students that were selected from the school to speak. So yeah, I'm a really bad auntie that I didn't know that, huh? That's what you're all thinking. No, it's okay. Anyway, it was very cool. So it was awesome getting to hear her talk. She did a great job, and my favorite part was when I asked her if she was nervous, she goes, "No, not at all." So speaking in front of the whole school and the community and the parents, and yeah, no problem for her. So she's a rock star. But anyway, Norco L did a great job. Ms. Adame and Mr. Shriver just really bring home that event. They do a great, great job, so shout out to them. And then lastly, I want to mention an honor that I had that was so special. I was invited by the California Association of Student Councils, Region 11. They were having their annual student advocacy conference, and this was a group of students that came from San Bernardino and Riverside Counties. That's the Region 11. It's a completely student-run group, and there were students from Roosevelt, Centennial, JFK, and I think maybe Santiago. It wasn't a huge group, but there were quite a few, and what I thought was so cool was they, what they did was they would talk about policy problems, and they would then work together as in groups to come up with solutions. And so they had policy proposals based on these identified problems. And what I thought was really ironic, but I was very proud of the district, was that in all four of the cases, there was four different student groups that presented, our district was already doing all of the things that they proposed. So one of the proposals was having care hubs and having essentials available for students. I explained to them that we do that. Another one was to have a wellness, you know, to have a wellness summit, something to help students, or to help students, you know, be aware of their social and emotional needs, and, and I, and I got to explain to them how we do that. And there were some other examples, but I, I kept referring them back to our website and, and helping them talk about how they go before their school boards at the other district, at the other districts, to allow them to really get some, some leverage on, on what's important and using our programs that we're already using as, as an example. So that was really cool. I was, I was kind of proud of us. But anyhow, I really appreciated the opportunity and, and I'm, I'm just so proud of any time I see students that are willing to take a Saturday of their free time and go and work together in teams to research policy proposals. It's very impressive. My students, my children wouldn't do that in a heartbeat. So anyway, those parents are doing something right that I didn't do. Anyhow, that is the end of my report, and we will now move on to consent items. Sorry, when I try to go fast, I have a mouthful of marbles, so pardon us. Thank you for your patience with that mess of a report. So moving into our consent items, do we have anything that needs to be highlighted? Would anybody like to highlight an item?
I would like to highlight Page 2017B.
17B as in boy? Okay. That's actually something we will not be, that's not on the consent items. We'll be talking about that specifically. We'll be voting on that. Anybody else? Nope. Pulled items? Does anybody have anything to pull? No? None? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
I'm moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Chris, a second by Jamie. We will now vote on the consent items. Just have to hit it like six, seven times. Oh, again. I don't even have kids here and I still pull it out. Shoot. All right. Motion passes unanimously, Ms. Norma. Okay, so we're moving on now to Page 19 to Item 16T. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the attached 2526 Resolution Number 27, declaring its intention to establish community facilities District Number 25-2 of the CNUSD, authorizing the levy of special taxes within the proposed district and improvement areas numbers one and two therein, and approving other actions related thereto. I make a motion to, to approve this. Do I have a second?
Second.
I made the motion, Norma. Mary, second. Item passes unanimously. Item 16U, it is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the attached 2526 Resolution Number 28, determining the intention to incur bonded indebtedness within community facilities District Number 25-2 of the CNUSD on behalf of improvement areas number one and two therein. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Chris, seconded by Mary. We will vote. Item passes unanimously. Now, moving on to 17B as in boy. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached 2526 tentative agreement. I'm realizing now I'm reading this, do you need to, do you need to add to this, Glenn? I'm trying to hurry with the sake of time, and so I'm, do you, do you need to jump in?
No, just, it is an action item. You'll, you'll take action on it. And I just wanted to express my thanks to both teams who really took the job seriously at the negotiations table to craft this, this agreement. It's always appreciated, especially Dr. Roberts and Mrs. Grundmeyer for their leadership. I just wanted to thank them for that.
Thank you. And I know Jamie has her comment.
I would just like to comment specifically on Article 12, and Meg actually mentioned it, is that I really want to see this expand to our special ed, class size reduction. They've been at the same size since I was in special ed a long time ago, and just because we've always been doing it that way since the 70s doesn't mean that we need to continue. So I hope that, well, I want to see that get reduced as well in the future. Thank you.
I would like to see that, too. I did want to just say thank you to the team on both sides, and I wish we could have done more. I wish we could have given more in terms of our salaries. But I do want to mention, I know the formula has been brought up previously. I believe it's served us well over the last several decades, and I say that because we've not had to lay off in really bad times through the economy, through COVID. I lived through a government agency that had to lay off hundreds of my friends and coworkers, thousands in the actual county, and I would never want to see that happen. So I know it's, I believe it's, it's, it's done us well, although it, it's kept us in a, in a financial state that, that we're able to reduce class sizes like we, like we just did. We're going to have some challenging times ahead. We have a declining enrollment. We have an increase in the amount of students that are being, students on IEPs. They're increasing the amount, their, their portion of our students is increasing, and our enrollment is decreasing. As we know, we don't get fully funded by the federal government from, from what we should in terms of our special education students. So it's going to, I mean, it's going to remain an, a problem and an issue. I just, so I just want to throw that out. I do support this contract, but I, and I do also wish that we could have done better, but I support it.
Mary or Anna, would you like to jump in? No? Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Chris, seconded by Mary, and let's vote. Item passes unanimously. All right, we have made it, and under the gun of time. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All right. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Chris. Item passes, and meeting adjourned 10:34 PM. Good night, everyone. Drive safe.